Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 1,208th regular meeting and public hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, or actually which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the city council. After holding their own public hearing, then they will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plats and/or vacating petitions. The commission's recommendation is forwarded to the city council for the final determination as to whether a petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to city council. Resolutions adopted by the city planning commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The planning commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Denau.
President.
Mr. Bonjero.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Ventura is here.
Karen Magno is here.
Chair Wolschow is here.
Also with us tonight, we have Mark Toramina from our planning department, Stephanie Reese, and Erica Goff, all from our planning department. And for those folks in our audience, the format of this meeting is that each of the items, we have two items of main interest on our agenda tonight. Each of those will be called. I will go to our planning staff to give us background information about the petition. Then we'll ask the petitioner to come forward and speak to the item. We'll have some questions for them, and then we will give an opportunity for anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against the petition to come forward after the petitioner. So we'll prompt you along through that process, and we'll make it as easy as we can. We're going to first start with our public hearing section of our agenda, item number one.
Petition 2023-11-01-06, submitted by Skilken Gold under sections 1.3.13 and 1.3.15, the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended, requesting to rezone the west 296.7 feet, .70 feet of the property, 15,100 Newburgh Road, located at the southeast corner of Newburgh and Five Mile Roads in the northwest quarter of Section 20 from RUF Rural Urban Farm to C2 General Business.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is a request to rezone. This is the southeast corner of Five Mile and Newburgh Roads. The rezoning would be from RUF Rural Urban Farm to C2 General Business. The parcel is owned by the Felician Sisters of North America, which own about one-half square mile of land, or 320 acres. That consists of the west half of Section 20. Now, this is bordered by Five Mile Road to the north, Newburgh Road to the west, Schoolcraft Road to the south, and Levan Road to the east. This zoning change would facilitate the development of a Sheetz gas station, convenience store, and restaurant. The portion of the property that would be rezoned is approximately two and a half acres that measures 370 feet along Newburgh Road by 297 feet along Five Mile. Portions of the site include a regulated flood hazard zone that is established by FEMA, the federal emergency management agencies. This includes both Zone A, which is a hundred-year floodplain, and Zone AE, which is the floodway. The southwest corner of this intersection is occupied by a Shell gas station, and adjacent to that is the New Five Plaza. Both of those properties are Zone C1, local business. At the northeast corner of the intersection is a CVS Pharmacy, as well as Century Retail Plaza, which is Zone C1 as well. And then the northwest corner is occupied by Marathon Gas Station and other retail, including bottles and stuff party store. The zoning there is C2 General Business. The Future Land Use Plan designates the property as Parks and Community, which encourages the preservation of open spaces at public park facilities and civic institutions. Parks and Community includes publicly and privately owned facilities providing recreational, educational, governmental, and other services to the community. In 1962, the southeast corner was rezoned from RUF to C2 for the development of a Texaco gas station. The gas station existed at this location from 1962 to approximately 1984, and then in 1981, the planning commission rezoned the property back to RUF after the gas station had been demolished. The preliminary plans for the Sheets show a one-story, 6,139-square-foot building, which is located near the middle of the area that would be rezoned. Access would be provided from two driveways, one off Newburgh Road and the other off Five Mile Road. Along the Five Mile Road frontage, the plans show six fuel islands with pumps on each side and with the capacity to accommodate a total of 12 vehicles. Parking for up to 39 cars is shown on the building's north, south, and west sides, with a drive-through pickup window on the east side, including a separate service lane for stacking and ordering at the property's south end. The exterior of the building would be constructed of brick and cast stone, and it shows a peak tower feature located in the northwest corner of the building above the main entrance. The interior includes a convenience store, a full-service restaurant with 30 seats, as well as an outdoor patio on the north side of the building with 12 patio seats. There's also office areas, storage, mechanical rooms for refrigeration units, and restrooms. The gas station drive-through restaurant, or gas stations and drive-through restaurants are treated as a waiver use in the C2 district. Thus, if this zoning change does move forward, the next step in the process would be the review of the site plan and the waiver petition by both the planning commission followed by the city council. The petitioner submitted a traffic impact study that recommends full-access driveway on Newburgh Road, lengthening the existing auxiliary right-turn lane, and providing a deceleration taper. And on Five Mile Road, the plan suggests restricting the driveway to right-in and right-out only. Additionally, the study recommends adjustments to the traffic signal at the Five Mile-Newburgh intersection. The project will necessitate the relocation of a 20-inch storm sewer and impacts portions of the hundred-year floodplain that will require the approval of the State of Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes, and Energy or Eagle. With that, Mr. Chairman, I will be happy to read out the correspondence. I will note that you have received a number of items from residents and others on this. Without reading those, each of you have been provided copies of all the correspondence that we have received.
Yes, sir.
From the departments, we have three letters. The first is dated November 15th. It's from the Office of the Treasurer, indicated that they have no objection because there are no taxes due at this time as the property is tax exempt. That letter is signed by Linda Sheel, Treasurer of the City of Livonia, at the time the letter was written, which was November 15th. And then November 20th, we received a letter from our accounting department, Department of Finance, excuse me, indicating that there are no amounts receivable, general water and sewer. Thus, they have no objections to the proposal. That's a letter signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. And lastly, we have a letter dated November 13th from our engineering division that reads as follows. "The subject parcel is assigned the address of 15100 Newburgh Road. Additional addresses will be assigned once the property split has been approved. Number two, the legal description included with the submitted drawings appears to be correct and should be used in conjunction with this project should the rezoning be approved. Number three, the proposed lot split will need to be submitted to the assessors department and will be required to be approved prior to any construction permitting. Four, the existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Sanitary Sewer, Water Main, and Storm Sewer. The submitted drawings do not include any information regarding proposed services to the building, but the design engineers for the project have been in contact with this office and are aware of this department's requirements. We will review the proposed services once the design drawings are submitted for permitting. Five, as noted, design calculations are not shown on the submitted drawings, but the project will be required to meet the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance, including stormwater detention requirements. Six, the existing storm sewer easement across the property will need to be vacated, and new easements will be required. Easement dedications will be completed after installation of the new utilities, but will be required prior to obtaining a certificate of occupancy for the project. Seven, any work within the floodplain will require the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. And eight, any work within the Five Mile Road right-of-way will require permits from Wayne County Department of Public Service." This letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer, and that is the extent of the correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. And as Mr. Toramina noted, we have received a number of email communications, either sent directly to us or through city offices, the mayor's office, and others that have made it to us. We do have all those, and they will be made part of our permanent record. We appreciate those comments, and we've been able to read those. Next, is there any questions from any of the commissioners for our planning staff? I don't see any questions for our planning staff. Our petitioner is in the audience. Feel free to come forward to one of our podiums. And there you go. You can use the podium so they can get you on camera. Well, I'd say you start with your name and address for our record.
Andrew Richland, 4270 Morris Road, Columbus, Ohio, 43230. I work for Skilken Gold, and we are the developer on this project.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And what I do want to make a note, as I usually do with these types of items, is the petition that's before us today is a zoning request to rezone the property to C2 General Business. And that's going to be the main focus of the decision-making that we're going to make tonight. For those who are unfamiliar with the process, this is kind of a two-step process. We're going to go through a zoning request first, which is what we're dealing with tonight. And then this will proceed on to city council with an approving or denying recommendation. And then usually the second part of the process is that a site plan would then come back before the city, and that would go into the details of the actual building and the colors and the layout and all those fine details. So you may not hear as many details or conversation around that type of part of this proposal at this point, and that's why we're going to try to focus on the zoning more so. But admittedly, you have to understand what the property is going to be used for once you do rezone it. So we do appreciate you giving us those conceptual plans. Go ahead with your presentation, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you. What is the Sheets? We'll get into that today. If I can get the clicker to work. Oh, there we go.
There we are.
All right. So Sheets, high-level Sheets is a restaurant, a convenience store, and a fuel service provider. This particular project is at the intersection of Newburgh Road and Five Mile within the City of Livonia. A few of the items that we're going to cover as a part of this presentation. General brand introduction. We'll look at some photos and building elevations. We'll talk about existing site conditions, proposed site development. And then finally, we'll go through some of the standard of review for amendments as it pertains to the rezone. Along with me today are a few members of the Sheets Real Estate Development Team, our land use attorney, our traffic engineer, as well as our civil engineer. So throughout our time tonight, some of these individuals may be coming up here to speak as well. First, we'll, per the agenda, we'll get into the brand introduction.
Good evening. Thank you, Drew.
My name is David Bruckelmeyer of Sheets. My address is 39300 West 12 Mile Road, Farmington Hills, Michigan. So a few things. We're new to the area, so we'd like to take just a few minutes and give you an idea of who Sheets is and what we are as a family. So Sheets was started in 1952, central Pennsylvania, by an 18-year-old named Bob Sheets. And we still hold true to a lot of the things that Bob did back in the 1950s. We are still a deli. We have made-to-order sandwiches. We have some carryout items, like bread and milk and things like that. Carryout items that our customers need on the go, all hours of the day. So we like to provide a service like that to our customers all throughout our platform with a very consistent, you know, a consistent message and a consistent store brand. So a few things that set us apart, and we'll go through this, is we have a really awesome career opportunity within Sheets. We promote people from within. We have competitive wages, very good benefits. For instance, you know, people at the stores have the same benefits I would have as a corporate employee. So we really do provide a very good offering for people that work at our locations and are really doing the hard work day in and day out. Got to get the right button here. We like to focus on our customers. Everything we do is focused on making sure that our customer experience is one of the best and premium offers on the market. We continue to do things like reinvest. We update our menus. We update the interiors of our stores on a regular basis and maintain them really well. In addition, we do a lot of advanced technology. For instance, we have mobile ordering on our app. You can come in and pick it up in the store, get it curbside, come through our drive-throughs if one's available at the location. We also have things like self-checkouts and other things like that, other technology that our customers can enjoy. And next, I'd just kind of like to give you a brief overview of what are you really talking about with the Sheets, you know? Everyone from, you know, Chick-fil-A to, you know, McDonald's, to all kinds of other organizations that serve food have all kinds of different looks and different feels. Well, something we do at Sheets is we try to provide kind of that consistent, really good feeling building with a premium look. And you can kind of see the inside of our building, tile floors, really nice architectural features, a really good seating area where people can come in and enjoy their food. And this is prototypical. This isn't something that's one-off. This isn't a special project. This is what the inside of our stores look like in general. So what you see tonight is really what we're talking about. And then from an exterior aesthetic standpoint, we have premium materials. I think your staff here has reviewed our architectural planes. We have full-section brick and stone, a lot of articulation on the building to give it a good look, plenty of glazing, things like window awnings and a really nice cupola to just make our building look premium and fit in with the surrounding areas, as well as a really nice-looking auto canopy with some architectural features that you can see. And then just a quick, you know, our drive-through. Let's talk about that. It's really different than most of the industry. It's all touchscreen. So when a customer pulls up, they don't even have to talk to an individual in the store. They pull up, they use the menu when they get there, and submit their order, and they don't even have to talk to anybody. So we're not talking about having a squawk box out there and things like that. Or they can, like I said, go on the mobile app and order ahead. We wanted to present you just a quick look at our elevations that we're proposing. And as you can see, these match with, you know, really, the colors may look a little different because these are PDS, but ultimately, those pictures that you just saw are really, really similar to these elevations that are proposed at this location. So the top is the front of our building, and that side is where the side seating is. And then that is the drive-through on the top. That would be the drive-through side. And then on the bottom, that would be where the drive-through queuing would be. And then just a quick look at our fuel canopy elevations. Like we showed earlier, there's architectural trusses that just give it an updated, really nice, modern look. The, all the lighting is recessed, so we don't have any floodlights. We don't have any lights that are showing, so we meet a lot of lighting codes. It's a really good-looking, really good-looking feature to our site. And then just a quick look at our dumpster. We still provide the same full-section brick, really nice quality doors. They look really good in comparison to the industry standards to just give you a good idea of what that looks like. And from there, I'm going to let our project team take it over.
Thank you.
So the project location. This red box you see is roughly the perimeter of the City of Livonia. The red star is where our project is proposed. The existing zoning map, as you can see, the southeast corner of this intersection is where our parcel is being proposed. It's currently Rural Urban Farm, proposing to rezone that to C2, which falls in line with the existing zoning at this particular intersection. Existing site conditions. So the red box is a rough outline of the 2.5 acres that we're proposing to develop here. Directly north of us is the CVS, along with some retail adjacent to it. Directly west of us is the Shell station, along with some retail throughout that shopping center. Northwest of us is the mobile station, I believe it is, along with some additional retail. Directly south of us is a parking lot for the Madonna University athletics facility. Directly east is first the Belbranche drain and then some additional vacant land. Proposed site plan. So I'll just go through some of the various site elements. As you can see in blue on the east side of this plan, that's the Belbranche drain. That drain is significant in size. We've reviewed the floodplain. We've talked to Eagle about the floodplain. We're proposing a very minor impact to the floodplain, and no issues are anticipated in terms of the permitting that we will need to get from Eagle for that. It's not a major impact. So that eastern piece of the site, mostly east of the Belbranche drain, but also partially west of it, that makes up roughly one-third of our site. That particular area will remain preserved. The trees, the Belbranche drain, none of that will be impacted. And again, that makes up one-third of our site. The 2.5 acres as a whole, roughly 45% of that, so almost half of that will remain, or excuse me, will be impervious by the time we finish this development. So that impervious land makes up the proposed landscaping elements, as well as the existing preserved landscaping that exists there today. So a significant portion of this property will be impervious. The south side of this site is where our drive-through order point is. Dave alluded to it earlier, but this is a low-volume drive-through. This is not what you might experience at a Chick-fil-A that drives a lot of drive-through traffic. This drive-through does not see that kind of volume. This is a convenience opportunity for the customer. If you're driving with three toddlers in the car and you don't want to drag them out into the store, well, then you can pull up to the drive-through and order a gallon of milk, a pack of soda, whatever it is that you might need, food from the restaurant. It's a convenience item. On the north face of the store is where the outdoor patio seating is. The primary entrance to the building is on the northwest corner of the building. The secondary entrance to the building on the south face of the building. There's currently no sidewalks along Newburgh or Five Mile here. We're proposing new sidewalks on the entire length of our property line. There's a pedestrian access point that we're proposing to connect to the sidewalk on Newburgh. What else? Access. So we're proposing two access points, one on Five Mile, one on Newburgh. The access point on Newburgh is proposed as a full-access point. The access point on Five Mile is proposed to have some restrictions on it. So that access point on Five Mile will be a right-in, right-out only. That's, it's a safety concern to limit left-turning movements. So we're not proposing left-turning movements at that access point. 6,000-square-foot store. You know, we somewhat represent the landscaping here. We haven't dove into a landscaping plan, but all landscaping requirements will be met as a part of this project. I think generally, that summarizes the site components that we're proposing as a part of this development. And so now I will pass it on to you, John.
The down arrow. The down arrow? Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Planning Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you this evening. My name is John Gaber. I'm the land use attorney for the development. My address is, excuse me, 380 North Old Woodward, Suite 300, Birmingham, Michigan. And what I'd like to do is to take you through the ordinance standards, because obviously you have certain criteria that you need to look at in making this decision as to whether to recommend the rezoning or not to city council. There are about 12 standards. I'll try to go through them as quickly as I can and try not to repeat information that was already given tonight. However, you know, there has been some factual information presented that, you know, we need to review in the context of the ordinance standards. So I will go through that hopefully as painlessly as possible. So the first standard is a consistency with the policies and objectives of the master plan and recent development trends in the area. The city has, it's hard to look at this, so let me look at my cheat sheet. The city has designated the entire property of the Felician Sisters of North America as Parks and Community on the future land use map, as Mark had stated. Such designation may not, though, accurately indicate the existing or the future uses of this property. And we believe that it really doesn't take into consideration recent development trends for the property itself. So if you look at the property, this is it, essentially, in a nutshell. The property is currently used, you know, for purposes such as a hospital, university facilities, hospice care, a convent with priests and nun housing, a skilled nursing center, and other miscellaneous uses. A significant portion of the property is vacant excess space available for alternate uses, including the subject site. And the Felician Sisters submitted a letter to you dated January 12th, and it really highlights their vision for this property and for their collective property. And it says their campus, let's see, we know the existing uses. And it says, "A campus also contains some acreage, including the 2.5 acres on the corner of Newburgh and Five Mile Road, that is not used to directly support the current and the expected future ministry activities." So they've carefully considered the best future use of this land prior to entering into any agreement to sell the land, and they believe it's the proposed Sheets development. They also state that they believe the proposed Sheets will benefit the overall Felician campus by providing students, residents, staff, and visitors of the campus convenient access to goods and services not currently located on campus. So I think these are considerations that we have to consider as well from the property owner. Now, relative to consistency too, let's look at the zoning map for a second. Most of the property is reflected as RUF, but you see the color parcels. The purple parcel is Zone NM3 for housing. The parcel on the corner, the dark burgundy parcel, is Zone C4 for the hospital, and the parcel next to it is Zone C1 for the nursing center. It appears that this large property should also be designated as different uses on the future land use map, including, you know, commercial, residential, possibly mixed use, as well as Parks and Community uses. The future land use map does not seem to be updated to accurately designate the different existing uses, or those intended uses, as, you know, we've seen the Felician Sisters So the development trends within this property, we believe, should be considered and should include, you know, commercial uses, which is what we're proposing for the subject site. So we believe that those are the standards that we have to look at relative to the site for consistency with the master plan and development trends. Now, if you look at the subject site more globally, it's also located on the corner of a major thoroughfare, with three other corners designated as corridor commercial on the future land use map. Such major intersections are often designated in many areas of the city as corridor commercial, which also should be considered. The 2021 master plan indicates that gas stations and food services can be appropriate uses for the corridor commercial, which is what this corner has been designated, at least the other three corners. And then just as an aside, the deed that we'll take title of the property will have a prohibition against noxious type of uses on the property, which is further protection for the property and for the community. The next criteria to consider from your zoning ordinance is the consistency with the basic intent and purposes of the zoning ordinance. The proposed rezoning is to C2, which accommodates our uses. The proposed use can satisfy the specific rezoning conditions for the drive-through restaurant and also for the gasoline service stations. The applicant also believes that it can comply with the dimensional requirements of the C two ordinance. And as you know, the site was previously zoned commercial when the Texaco gas station was there many years ago. The next standard is the capability of the street system to safely and efficiently accommodate the expected traffic from the site. So if you look at this site, for a drive-through restaurant, access must be on a public street with a right-of-way of a hundred and twenty feet with two separate driveways. For a gas station on a corner lot, there has to be two separate driveways, one on each uh road facing it. We know the Five Mile Road is a county road essentially with a hundred and twenty-foot right-of-way, and Newburgh Road is a city road with a hundred and twenty-foot right-of-way. So this requirement is satisfied. These are major, or pardon me, arterial mile roads with five lanes each, which can accommodate the expected traffic generated by the uses. Most of the traffic, particularly for the gas station, is really pass-by traffic. Uh, what that means is that vehicles are already on the road. They're not making destination trips. People uh like leaving their homes or their businesses to uh go to this location as a destination. So it a lot of the traffic is traffic that's already on the road. And the applicant has generated the traffic improve, or traffic impact study that you've seen. Uh, Wayne County has indicated uh it's favorable, and the city has seen it as well. Now, the next standard is the capacity of utilities and services sufficient to accommodate the uses permitted in the district. And I think the engineering letter that Mr. Tormino read sufficiently uh states that the site complies with that requirement. The next criteria deals with changing conditions since the zoning ordinance was adopted uh or an error in the zoning ordinance, and we don't think that really applies to this situation. The next criteria says the amendment will not result in exclusionary zoning. And we believe this is the case because the proposed rezoning does not operate to exclude any types of land uses within the city. And the existing zoning, RUF, is available in many other areas of the city. So there, we don't believe there's any exclusionary zoning. The next standard is the compatibility of the site's physical, geological, hydrological, and other environmental features which with the uses permitted in C two. And this is really an interesting photo in the, I think it's from nineteen eighty-five, it says, of the Texaco gas station that was on the corner. Um, interesting historical photo. And we do know through our phase two that there is some environmental contamination on the site uh that emanated from that prior use. Uh, Sheets will be cleaning that up to the to the requisite environmental standards of the state, and that'll be done as part of this development. Regarding environmental uh features with the permitted uses, that's been mentioned already uh that the really the environmental feature is the drain and the wooded area on the east side of the property, which we're going to preserve. It's about a hundred feet in width and eight tenths of an acre. So there's not going to be any development within uh that particular area. There's an existing flood plain on the site. Uh, we've consulted with Eagle about the flood plain, and we don't anticipate any issues with being able to develop the site plan after our conversations with Eagle. The next standard is the compatibility of the potential uses in terms of sustainability, environmental impacts, density, nature of use, traffic impacts, aesthetics, infrastructure, and potential influence on property values. So this looks at a lot of compatibility issues with the uh the general area. The potential business commercial uses allowed in the C two district, we believe, are compatible with the surrounding uh zoning and uses of the site located because it's at a commercial intersection. And we know what's on the other corners. We've been through that tonight. They're all commercial uses. So the nature of the C two uses, particularly the Sheetz store, is really compatible with the nature of the surrounding uses at the intersection. Now, taking this standard further, compatibility of potential uses, um, we've been over the aesthetics. This is a very high-quality, premium building uh that we believe satisfies this element of the standard. And the traffic impacts, we believe, can be accommodated um as the TIS shows in this area with significant pass-by traffic in the five-lane uh roads that border each side of this site. So we believe that the rezoning, in summary, is is therefore consistent with the other uses at the intersection. Now, when you look at the site itself, uh the the property of the Felician Sisters, now with respect to the, whoops, let me back up, with respect to the adjacent properties to the south of the site, as Drew mentioned, uh it's it's really a parking lot for the athletic facilities that are being used. So we believe that the zoning ordinance will allow us to come, to be compatible with this site because it requires either a six-foot masonry wall or fence or a twenty-foot landscape buffer that we will comply with. With regard to the east side of the property, we're going to preserve the hundred-foot strip, uh providing the requisite buffer on that side of the property. So the use, density, aesthetics, and traffic impacts of the subject site will not adversely affect the adjacent properties, either at the intersection or uh, you know, on the on the southeast corner of the site. So we believe that we satisfy this criteria of the zoning ordinance. The next criteria, and we're getting close to the end, uh the boundaries of the Requested Rezoning District will be reasonable in light of its relationship to surrounding districts. We've got a two-and-a-half-acre parcel here uh to be developed, and we think that the the configuration and the size of this parcel is fairly consistent with other uh commercial zoning in the area. The boundaries and relationship, as I just mentioned that, it is consistent. And we believe that we can meet the dimensional requirements of the C two district. The next standard is that the Requested Rezoning District is considered to be more appropriate from the city's perspective than another zoning district. Well, the only other zoning, the zoning districts that apply would be C two and C three. A rezoning to C two would allow general business uses on the site, including the Sheetz development. Um, and we believe that's more desirable than C three highway services, which is the other compatible zoning district. C three has higher intensity uses than C two, and we don't believe it would be would be appropriate at this site. And as you've seen, the other corners of Five Mile and Newburgh are zoned commercial, all of them. And they're very close, well, fairly close to the expressways. So for these reasons, we believe that the C two is the most appropriate zoning district as opposed to the C three, and those are the two districts that would accommodate the proposed use. Uh, K would be the standard that the rezoning is more appropriate than amending the list of permitted or special land uses in the current zoning district, uh the RUF zoning district. And we believe, in summary, that uh essentially these commercial uses that we're proposing would not really fit within the RUF, and so therefore, we believe that uh the rezoning is a more appropriate way to go. And then finally, the last standard, the Requested Rezoning will not create an isolated or incompatible zone in the neighborhood. The Requested Rezoning does not do this because uh it is instead, pardon me, it is located at a commercial intersection which has C one and C two uses at the other three corners. And the applicant also understands that the vacant property to the east will be marketed for development in the future. So therefore, we believe that it's not going to be an isolated uh site or incompatible zone with the neighborhood. So these essentially are are going through your your zoning ordinance criteria. These are the reasons that we believe that that we satisfy these requirements, and hopefully you'll agree and and recommend approval of this rezoning request. One other thing I wanted to mention that that didn't really come up, uh your zoning ordinance does not permit alcohol sales at gas station uses. And I just wanted to make it clear for the record that, you know, we are going to comply with your, you know, with your ordinances, definitely. So we will comply with that one as well as the rest. So we're here to answer any questions. Drew, did you have anything else? So we're here to answer your questions and and appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaber. All right, uh, let's see if we have any questions for our petitioner, for any of our commissioners. Is there any questions? Mr. Banjero?
Chair, I have a question for Mark and then for the petitioner. Mark, do we, I'm trying to think, is there any intersections that have three gas stations in the city? Maybe on the expressway?
Folks, folks.
I think on ninety-six and...
Well, on ninety-six, if you consider Schoolcraft Road, uh there are, there are, I believe, two locations. Um, other than that, the only intersection that I recall that had three gas stations in the recent future or about past was Six Mile and Farmington. Uh, but the but the gas station on the northeast corner of that intersection uh was converted to a retail plaza, I think in around two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen.
Northeast side, right?
Northeast corner, correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I know, great presentation, and I know Sheets has a lot of moving parts to it. Um, the beer and wine, you've agreed to put that to the side. Does, and you you have seven hundred, I think, locations, you said?
Yeah.
Are there any of these locations that have no gas station?
No, we do not uh operate any locations that don't have fuel, convenience, and restaurant.
Okay, so they all go together?
They they all are very consistent in what we offer.
Okay. And did you guys consider other intersections? And did you look around? Is this the only one that you could find?
I know our real estate people have spent a a significant amount of time looking at other properties. Um, and I I can ask them a little bit of, Scott, do you want to share a little bit about um where we looked at?
So Scott Armstrong with the Real Estate Department at Sheetz, uh thirty-nine, three hundred, West Twelve Mile, Farmington. Uh, we scoured this entire, I mean, there there's multiple other locations that we're looking at as well. We're looking to do over sixty stores in southeast Michigan, so we're looking at, I've pretty much looked at every intersection that.
I I think from my, I mean, everything I've heard about Sheets, I've heard nothing but positive stuff. Everybody says it's it's great. Just the issue with the three gas stations is going to be, to me, seems like it's a very touchy. It seems like it's it's great, but it needs to be maybe at a different corner.
Folks in here in the audience, I I do appreciate the enthusiasm, but there's going to be a lot of comments made throughout this meeting and that you may or may not like to hear, so we 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 need to be able to focus on the discussion and uh we need to be able to move along quickly. Are you all set, Mr. Banjero?
Thank you.
Is there any other questions for our petitioner, from any of the commissioners?
Yeah, a couple.
Mr. Nero?
Yeah, can we, um, one of you guys said that the Bell Branch drain would have minor impact. Can you tell me a little bit more about that? What does minor impact mean?
Whoever's appropriate to answer that.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, Tyler Smith with Manik and Smith Group. I'm the civil on this. Uh, twenty-three sixty-five South Hagerty Road in Canton, Michigan. So uh, we were working with Eagle on this one with preliminary discussions. And basically, there is impacts less than three hundred cubic yards within the flood plain. And uh, that was minor impact per their permits, so.
Does that mean the trees will remain there?
Yes.
You guys aren't going to touch the trees and the waterway will remain intact?
Correct. We were not going to do anything within the floodway, um, which is the critical area. The flood plain is just minor, so. And the trees will remain intact, uh, intact.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
Um, you guys also touched on the jobs and that they're on jobs with benefits. Can you tell us how many jobs specifically this site, how many people this site will employ?
Thank you. We will employ roughly thirty-five full and part-time employees. We try to get as many full-time as we can, which obviously means more benefits and things like that. And and we obviously offer a lot of upward mobility, so people have the ability to move up through some management ranks. Uh, so roughly thirty-five.
Great.
All right, any other questions?
I I do have one, one last question.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
Um, I, how many fuel stations are there going to be on this site? Pump stations?
Pumps, there will be six two-sided pumps, so a total of twelve parking spaces for fueling.
That was it for me.
All right. Well, if you think of anything else, we can go back to, is there anyone else uh on this panel wishing to ask questions of our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Long?
So I can cross off most of my questions because my colleagues already got to them, but um who's your target market? I mean, this is the location here, you know, you, there's no, there's no freeway ramp off two seventy-five. You have the one off ninety-six, a mile down. Um, you know, twenty-four-seven, who who are you? Who's going to stop by? And I know, uh, I believe somebody in the presentation talked about how the gas is basically just a drive-by, an impulse purchase. Um, but but the food is going to be more of a destination, right? So who are you, who are you marketing to?
Absolutely. So I I I know our real estate people have done a a lot of research on this from a traffic standpoint. And we feel that the intersection has the type of numbers that we're looking at from a pass-by perspective. But but let's go through one, for instance, um, an offering that would be really attractive to, you know, Trinity Health employees. You know, a twenty-four-seven, three sixty, three sixty-five business for them is really attractive because their food offerings overnight are really limited. And that's something we're able to offer them, you know, all the time, so they can know they can they can go get a good fresh meal somewhere, get a salad, get a sandwich, uh, and be able to go back to work. I mean, in addition to that, um, overnight, first responders tend to uh, you know, have a pretty heavy presence at our sites because we're twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five with our full, full offering, and and they also need those services as well. So everyone from people on their way to work, um, all the way to first responders and people working in Trinity Health would expect a service.
Thank you. Um, it's the, so your food is not fast food, right? Yeah, because that that really hasn't come up a whole lot here. It it's what you call fresh food?
So it it is fresh. We, it's made to order. You you can order everything from a burger and fries all the way to a salad and a nice burrito, um, things like that. So it it's it's everything in between. Our our menu offering is pretty substantial. I think there's like one-point-one million combinations that you could have, so it, you you know, there there is some fast food elements, but we also have other great, healthy options. Um, some of them are even to-go, like we have, you know, hard-boiled eggs and nice sandwiches ready, take and take and go, um, so they don't have to wait if they're in a really big hurry. Uh, as well as like, we have some vegetables that are pre-cut. People can go and grab a nice um box of vegetables to go for their lunch and things like that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura?
I'd just like to clarify your answer there. So you do have fast food.
We do.
You can drive through and get a hamburger and a malt or a Coke or fries or whatever.
Yeah, we do, but we offer more than that.
And also go in and sit down. So it's fair to say your fast food restaurant will have a sit-down portion of it.
That's correct, yeah. We have thirty spaces inside. We encourage customers to come in. And uh, we also have free Wi-Fi, so sometimes people come in, they're on the road, stop and grab a cup of coffee, um, grab a, grab a sandwich for breakfast, do some emailing or something like that, eat their meal, and then be on their way. And we also offer some outdoor seating. I think we have seventeen spaces outside to sit at.
Great, thank you. That was your answer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
I I've heard it asked a couple of ways, uh, why this location, uh, being not on a freeway, being local to the neighborhood and the and the hospital and the surrounding areas. But i- is there one thing or a couple of things in particular that this location sticks out for you to, as as a choice for you?
Um, I might have my real estate people answer that question. Scott, would you like to come up and answer that?
So we look at um mainly traffic, existing traffic, and typically we like to be up against, like, our first phase coming into a new market is um interstate. But this market's a little bit different where there's a lot of internal traffic. So we target the traffic in some of the neighborhoods because they come to us either passing home to go home or going to work, so it's just a convenient spot for them to go.
Okay, so you draw, you've seen in your studies that you draw from the neighborhood as well as traffic to and from work?
Correct.
What fuel options do you have? Now, you've got, uh, I think you said, a dozen fueling uh pumps.
Are you talking about grades?
What do you, what do you have for options? And is there an electric charging option at this site? Is there, is there going to be uh potentially free air for tires? And I know we're talking about the the uh...
And I know we're talking about the, the, uh, the rezoning, but what do you, what do you offer there?
So air is free at all locations, and we sell every grade of fuel that you can get. So we have eighty-seven, eighty-nine, ninety-one, eighty-five, which is the, um, corn-based one, eighty-eight, which is fifteen percent ethanol, non-ethanol, so zero ethanol, and then diesel.
So when we talk about diesel, we're not talking about this being a truck stop, uh, semis pulling in there, no?
So it's just passenger pickup trucks or a car that runs off diesel.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caremagnon. Any other questions for our petitioners? The, uh, one question I have is, when it comes to, maybe this is for your real estate person, Mr. Armstrong, do Sheets typically develop on greenfield sites that are undeveloped? Or do they ever repurpose existing parcels, existing gas stations, or other types of, uh, places like that?
Yeah, I, I can tell you that we, we develop all different types of parcels. Everything from green space all the way to pre, pre-existing developments. We do struggle to redevelop existing fuel sites because a lot of them are deed restricted, so we're unable to, you know, have our use there because it's restricted on the deed. So, but, but from a Sheets perspective, we have developed an incredible number and, and variety of sites.
Okay, the reason I ask is because obviously there are some, there are some, uh, proprietors out there in different industries that prefer only greenfield sites, uh, you know, and ones that have been completely undeveloped. So I was just curious if Sheets is one of those types of companies or not. It sounds like you will go anywhere you can.
That is correct. We, we don't get, uh, we don't get, um, you know, nervous about re, redeveloping sites and doing demo and things like that. And obviously, we do a substantial amount of environmental remediation, and a lot of it's in good faith. So, you know, at our, at our own cost and our own expense, um, we will come back and clean up environmental contamination before we even finish our development on the site.
And, uh, your attorney mentioned that, which I think is, is good that they pointed that out. On that environmental topic, uh, you do have an open waterway, uh, right next to this property. Are there any special things from an environmental perspective that Sheets needs to do in the event that there is a spill? Because it's not just going to go into a sewer system, it's also going to go right into an open waterway. Are there certain mitigations that you put in place as you design this property?
Absolutely. So, so let's go through a couple of things. So Sheets purchases and installs the most expensive fuel system that we can be, that can be purchased on the market. So we spare no expense to put in dual-wall tanks and do all kinds of monitoring that's active. And for instance, we buy stainless steel fittings where some of their operators might purchase galvanized because we know the stainless steel ones aren't going to leak. Um, and so we have an internal team that all they do is maintain, operate, and monitor all of these U S T systems. So they're an in-house, you know, group that does this. And I, I can tell you that I've talked to our head of the environmental department. Their budget is unlimited to fix any kind of issue. If we have to go and dig, dig up a tank on an operating store to fix it, we will absolutely do that. And we have the financial backing to do that. Um, so that's something that sets us apart. We have the willingness and the ability to come back and maintain our systems. From a stormwater perspective, we do a lot of things, and I don't, I don't know if it's in your code, but we do everything from installing virus snouts and sumps in our, our catch basins, uh, to catch potential contaminants. We put in some O W Ss under our auto canopies. In addition to that, all of our store employees are trained to deploy an onsite spill kit that we have at all times. So if there is a spill, um, we have people onsite that can manage that actively and provide a first response in order to stop it from getting any worse and, you know, maybe getting into the, into the drain that's right next to us. So we have those, uh, resources all onsite. And in addition, our environmental people are on-call twenty-four-seven. We have someone in the company that is, you know, very knowledge or knowledgeable and can handle spills, and they're on-call twenty-four-seven for our employees should there be an issue.
Okay, thank you for that answer. And just to, I want to ask one other question about the, uh, the dining experience. Just so I understand how it works, uh, obviously, if you're going through the drive-through, you're going to order and then pick up your, your order at the window. If a person is going inside, you said there's indoor seating, is that, is there a waiter that comes to that person? Or do you go to a counter and order and then take your food to your seat?
So actually, when you come in our store, there are three touchscreens. You can walk up and you just go and click through your order, much like you would something on your, on your phone, um, when you're doing like a mobile order or something like that. So the full menu offering is, is there on the touchscreens, you add things to your order, click submit, and then it goes into the queue, and then you pay for it separately. And then, uh, your order number gets called up at the counter, you would go up and, uh, go grab your food, sit down and eat.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there any other questions from any of our other commissioners for our petitioner before we go to our audience? I don't see any other questions. I'm going to go to the audience and see if there's anyone wishing to speak for or against this petition. We're going to ask that you come to one of our two podiums. If there is a lot of interest in speak, in speaking tonight, we do ask that you try to keep your comments to a three-minute, three-minute, uh, time period so that we can have everybody get an opportunity to speak tonight in a reasonable time. Mr. Narro is going to be our timekeeper, and she'll let you know when you hit the three-minute mark. We'll start with this gentleman over here, and then we'll go over...
Should be ladies first, actually.
I saw you come to the podium first, but if you're willing, if you're willing to do that, that's fine. Ma'am?
Hi, um, thank you for having me and listening. My name is Denise Collins-Robinson. I've lived, you, I had sent you all an email yesterday. I've lived in Livonia since nineteen fifty-eight, most of my life, a little bit away, but, and in three different houses. And first for many years, my family at Coventry Gardens, so I'm familiar with the five in Farmington, and now I'm in Castle Gardens. And speaking of Castle Gardens, I'm wondering, as I hear from the Sheets people, how many of you live within one mile of a Sheets restaurant, gas station? Anybody?
Ma'am?
Twice.
Do you not?
Ma'am?
Probably moved. So, um, so, yeah, I know, that's rhetorical. So anyway, but, um, so you saw my email. My concerns about this, I won't go over that in detail, but we have five gas stations within two miles. I don't think we need any more. We have, it sounds like liquor won't be sold or alcohol, that's good, but we have plenty of convenience stores there. And the traffic congestion, when I see, I was in shock when I saw that map. I thought, oh, my gosh, we live in Castle Gardens, uh, those of us here. I can't imagine, you know, of course, we love the nature, wish the deer could keep that land, that's fine. But I'm thinking of Joni Mitchell's song, you know, um, paved paradise to put in a parking lot and a gas station and a restaurant that's a drive-through. I can't imagine this impact on our neighborhood, the other two neighborhoods, uh, behind C V S and behind the other gas station. But we have plenty of this stuff, and to me, I, my mother's from Pennsylvania, and I know the Sheets there. And so this reminds me of something you see off the Ohio Turnpike. You pop off there, you go to those, those stations, and you go in and you go out. It does not remind me of something that's in a neighborhood, um, in Livonia. It doesn't seem like it's anything we need, but it seems like it's going to be really busy. You guys want profit. You want as many customers as you could get. I'm sure when they looked at that site and you asked them, why here, it's because it's near the freeway. There's a lot of people going to be coming off ninety-six and that area. They're not coming from neighborhoods. We're not all going to be popping over to Sheets to eat and get gas. And we have plenty of that right now. So I think this is for profit for them, and it's not going to be Livonia citizens. And I don't think there really is any addition to our quality of life. I don't know how the ordinances work, and if you can turn this down. I understand the Felician sisters need to sell that land, but I'm just, um, and you mentioned Chick-fil-A's. The Chick-fil-A in our neighborhood is over by Kohl's. It is not near a neighborhood. It is not near where they're coming right out of their neighborhood to compete with all these people going in and out to a Sheets. You know, the Chick-fil-A is packed all the time, by the way, and if they're trying to compare themselves to that, we're in trouble. So, but it isn't right near a neighborhood like Castle Gardens or the other two neighborhoods. So I'm rambling here a little bit, but I really implore you to reconsider this. Look at office space, look at medical buildings, something like that. We don't need this.
Well, thank you, Ms. Collins-Robinson. And we did receive your email, it's quite detailed, it has a lot of bullet points, uh, high-level points, and we do appreciate your comments that you sent to us in email as well, so thank you. Uh, sir?
Good evening, zoning commission. I'm glad you all made it out this cold evening. Everybody else here, regardless of your opinion, thank you for coming out.
Can we get your name and address?
I'm about to. Uh, my name's Randy Gustamsky. I'm a homeowner, homeowner with my wife of thirty years, right at Five Mile and Newburgh.
Well, good evening.
Three-six-nine-nine-six-five-mile.
Thanks.
If I were a semi-truck driver and I wanted to stop at Sheets, where would I park? I'd park across the street in the big parking lot there, next to my house. I'd go grab my meal, maybe let it run, let it stay warm like they usually do. That's a problem. If I had a big vehicle, I'd probably park across the street. The real estate companies apparently did a survey. I'm thinking, well, why not six in Newburgh? If you put one right on the same corner, southeast corner, you've got a big parking lot. It's not used in that corner. You don't have a residential community in sight of that corner. You've got a divided road on Six Mile there with a freeway entrance and exit. Don't have to go too far to maybe consider a different, better location than tearing up another green area. And then the argument, well, we're going to build eventually on the east side over there, so why not allow us over here west of the river? I don't know. Whose best interest is this? The people that want to make the money or all you citizens here? What's really best? All due respect to the Felician sisters, if they were selling the property to the current people, I wish we could have maybe been questioned about our feelings about it. I hold them to a higher standard because they should be. I respect them greatly. Fast food? Oh, they're much better than fast food. Well, Wendy's also offers a salad. I still call them fast food. I'm here fighting for our neighborhood, everybody. We don't need that. This Saint Mary's Square mile of property, it was medical.
Sir?
No, okay, one last, one last bit.
To summarize.
You know, we almost fought and lost the whole fifteen thousand-seat stadium they wanted to put right down the street. Come on. Who is that going to help but the people that are going to make money off it? Thank you very much. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for showing up on this cold evening once again.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Debbie Gustamsky. I'm the wife of this guy. We live at three-six-nine-nine-six-five-mile, so we're kitty-corner to where this would go. We share the wall with the C V S in the parking lot. And let me tell you, first of all, there are a lot of semi-trucks that come in, pull right up to the wall, stay overnight, go get their food from Sheesh or Subway or whatever's around there, and they loiter. You know, we end up having to put up with it. The police have been great when it gets loud and we've had to call because it's after eleven. But the, the parking lot lights are already bright enough. You put more illumination over there, it's going to be brighter, let alone it's twenty-four hours a day. I don't know, you, you have already too many commercial readily available places that are an eyesore right now in the community that can't be, you know, resold or rezoned, whatever needs to be, that they can look into without having to go in and dig up some virgin ground and put in this big obtrusive thing that doesn't even look like it would fit with the rest of the gas stations and, and, um, facilities around there. And it's going to impact those businesses too. So are they going to close and then those are going to be empty strip malls waiting as well? And then, you know, you have to keep in mind, there are still residents right on Five Mile, right on Newburgh. This isn't those other intersections that you're talking about where there aren't any houses right around. You know, we, we might be one of the few, but you can't disregard us for that. You know, we, we love Livonia, that's why we stay here. We like that it's not, forgive me, but a Canton alley. You know, there's greenery and, and it feels like you're at a slower pace when you come home, even though it's not, because you have that aesthetic around you. And this just does not make any common sense at all. So please put yourself in our shoes. Would you like a building right near your house? And a good question like Sheets, do any of them live that near? Do any of you live that near, you know, think about it? Please, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we'll go over to this podium. Ma'am, would you like to speak? Good evening.
I'm Brenna Shaw. I live at one-five-five-eight-three Sussex Street. And, um, this is not, I apologize for my dress. I'm balancing work and health and came right from the gym. But, uh, I would like to say that, again, I don't come to city meetings, I don't know anything about planning, but I am a resident who lives here. I'm a resident who lives in Country Home Estates, right across Five Mile and the north side of Five Mile. And I pay taxes here, and I'm going to try and not repeat anything that's been said. But I also, um, fail to understand how we need another gas station, another place to eat, why we have to fill our green space with a building. I drive home every day north up Newburgh and turn east onto Five Mile. And there is already a lot of traffic, and I know that works well for your situation, but as someone who's just trying to get home from work at the end of the day, I don't feel like dealing with any more traffic than what is already there. And I don't feel like, I, I enjoy, as someone else mentioned, when I come home from the end of the day, that little piece of green space that's there as I get off the freeway, driving thirty minutes home. I enjoy that green space of that piece of just, I'm coming home and I don't have to look at a commercial building or a gas station or a convenience store on every single corner. And, um, I would like to say that it's not aesthetics to me as a neighbor and as a healthcare worker, when you say that, oh, Trinity and they can come and get all that food.
Ma'am, keep talking to us.
Oh, sorry. As a healthcare worker, uh, there may be a few people that can leave that healthcare setting, the hospital during their shifts, but there's not very many people that can do that. So to sell that, that that's such a convenience for healthcare workers, I, I, as a healthcare worker, no. That's, it, it fits a very small group of people. And, um, we enjoy city, we enjoy living in Livonia. We don't want it more built up. We don't want it in our neighborhood. And, um, I, I guess it would be nice to hear, what voice do we have as a citizens to say, we don't want this turned into a development, and we certainly don't want another gas station or convenience store option at that corner. So thank you for letting us speak.
This is your opportunity, so we appreciate you coming and speaking.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Hi, James Crowley. I'm at sixteen-one-oh-six Blue Skies Drive over at Six Mile and Newburgh in Laurel Park. I also own four other properties in Castle Gardens, as well as my mother is in, right off Five Mile on Blue Skies, uh, very close to the proximity to this. Uh, I grew up there. I've been a resident for many, many years. I've owned my home for almost thirty years. But I will say, um, this is much like a truck stop. I traveled to Pennsylvania, you know, almost monthly at one time, and this is, like they said, something that you would see off a highway. Uh, as far as the trucks, I called today, as a matter of fact, and on my phone are those trucks that they were referencing, parked against their wall. Okay, if anyone would like to see, I'll pass my phone. There are trucks passed, and I pulled in because I was taking a picture in front of the, in front of the, yeah, um, Planet Fitness, because there were trucks parked there. And as I was snapping the picture, I watched a truck pull in, so I went over and I watched them park and pull his curtains so that they could rest. And I leave my mother's house, I go there, uh, you know, nightly for dinner with her. I leave sometimes ten-thirty, eleven o'clock, sometimes later. There are trucks parked overnight. I called and called several years ago, and I just got tired of calling. There was a sign then they po, they posted, uh, that they weren't allowed. That sign is now gone. So I feel like this is only going to bring more traffic. Furthermore, as far as the restaurant goes, with, it's fast food, come on, people. It's not, you know, you're touching a screen, it's fast food. As far as that goes, as far as the campus of Madonna, I'm a Madonna alumni, and it was before the times that we owned laptops, so I was there hours and hours on end every day. I would have never gone that far to get food. It's almost a mile from the actual campus to that location. It's almost a mile from the actual campus to that location. It's on the far end. All the activity is far over from there. I spent a few years there of my life, so I know that campus very well. And I would have never gone and walked over for lunch. Also, I would like to bring up, we are, our government is phasing out gas, gasoline automotive vehicles. We already have four stations within like a half a mile, a little more than a half mile. Do we have a plan for remediation? What are we going to do going forward? Now, I know that vehicles aren't gonna just stop the day that we, you know, the law comes into effect in 3030, but we are phasing them out. We're not gonna have 100 cars parked there plugged in because we're gonna be plugging them in at our home. Do we really need to do this? So, you know, think about this now. They also say they're not gonna have alcohol. Well, that's today, we know how business works. Because once they break ground and get what they, yeah, get what they've got, they're gonna come back and wanna change that ordinance and serve alcohol. We have plenty of those, we don't need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Is there anyone else in our audience wishing to speak? Oh, we have a lady coming forward. Good evening, ma'am.
Hello, everyone. I was one of the clappers earlier on. I do apologize, this is my first meeting, I'm very excited. My name is Katie McNulty. I live at 30976 Orange Lawn in Livonia, Michigan. I am born and bred from here. I think a lot of great points were made from my fellow citizens that are concerned because we don't want this. We don't want this at all. We don't need this. There's been so many great points about with regards to, oh, the healthcare workers are really, you know, there's a, there's a desire, there's a requirement for this. They're fine, they're eating, they're fine, trust me. They're busy, they're fine. And, and with regards to Jimmy just said about the alcohol, I mean, did you guys see the, the plans? The, the massive coolers in there? And what, what, to me, with a true master plan for the city, if that's the case, is talking about the small businesses. They wanna retain small businesses and grow small businesses. What's that gonna do to bottles and stuff? What's that gonna do to other small, you know, liquor stores that do that? You know, and they do shut down. This whole 24/7 thing, I just, again, I know they said they weren't gonna do it, but I, I don't believe that's truly the case. And even if we say we won't talk about the alcohol right now, something 24/7, Livonia goes to sleep at night. We do. We go to sleep. We don't need this. And I really appreciate your time. Minute fifteen.
You did great. Thank you, Ms. McNulty. Hi, good evening, ma'am.
Hi, Heather Anderson, 15470 Hidden Lane. I actually didn't even come here for this agenda, but I, I love that plot of land there. Every day on my way home, seeing the deer there, it's my favorite. I agree with everybody here. My question, in addition to what everybody else said, is we have so many restaurants and businesses that were 24 hours or open late night that can't get employees. They're never going to be able to keep a fast food restaurant open 24 hours. I mean, we have a hard time keeping gas stations open 24 hours. I mean, I don't, it's gonna end up being empty. I mean, it's not even gonna work out how they think. And it's just gonna be empty and they're gonna tear that ground for nothing at the end of the day because nothing's gonna stay 24 hours in Livonia nowadays. There's no employees to work. Everything closes early because of the lack of employees at fast food. So that was just in addition to everybody else's point, so.
We appreciate it, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Is one of our gentlemen coming forward? Uh, one second, let me let this gentleman speak first.
You come.
I just wanted to say, again, Livonia's motto is families first. So please keep that in mind.
Oh, we do, we do.
And also, we already have a problem with rats in that area because the businesses right now aren't even being held accountable to keep their traps in working order. So more food, more trash, not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Hi, good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Chris Carona. I'm the owner and operator of bars and stuff of Five Mile in Newburgh. One of the gentlemen mentioned there is no much, no more traffic gonna be created, how this one can be. We already know, they don't talk about how many accidents. They didn't say, they didn't mention nothing about any accident happen at Five Mile in Newburgh. I've been there for almost 12 years. And seems like every month at least one or two accident because of the high traffic. We also have two gas station in each corners. And we have grocery store one mile away on Five Mile and one mile on Sixth Mile. So why we need another grocery store? I hope they can talk about the accident and they can talk about the traffic, how much, how much can be created. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for coming. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anyone else coming forward. Uh, we're gonna go back to our petitioner if they would like to come forward. And again, we don't wanna engage in a back and forth debate, but if there's any items that you've heard that you would like to address or discuss, please do so.
Sure. You know, I'd like to start with addressing EV. Everybody's planning for the future right now. There's a lot of uncertainty when it comes to fuel of the future. Here's a couple of things I can tell you. Our, our restaurant and convenience store are self-sufficient. So if we didn't sell fuel, we would still be profitable. How does that set us up for the future? The answer is, we're developing our own in-house EV charging technology. It hasn't come to fruition, fruition yet because a lot of the technology is still proprietary. So Tesla and some of the other charging ports don't have that technology released and we can't use it. So what are we doing right now about that? Well, with our push into this market, we are partnering very heavily with Tesla. We cannot guarantee that they wanna come to our sites, but they know about all of our sites. And Tesla's very interested in being a partner with us in this market. So we're really excited to, to bring some of those things to fruition in the southeast Michigan area. In addition to that, we take some, some pre-planning steps to have ADA pathways out to future EV parking spaces where people can charge. So we're not just throwing a site up here without planning it. We're, we're putting conduits in, we're planning for pedestrian traffic. We're doing a lot of things like that. So that makes us really unique from other fuel station operators. So I just would, would like to bring that to your attention. A cou, couple of other things I'd like to address. Let's, let's talk about trucks. Another thing that sets Sheetz apart is that all of our delivery trucks for our food and our fuel are Sheetz-owned trucks and we're op, operated by Sheetz employees. So what does that mean? We do not have them park onsite overnight or idle for hours on end. They're there dumping fuel, they're there unloading food, and then they leave. We do have day vendors, you know, chips and drinks and things like that. Those are all daytime hours. And with those type of, of deliveries, it's in and out pretty quick. So I'd just like to reiterate, we don't, you know, have trucks idling onsite for long, long periods of time. We certainly do not invite, you know, over-the-road truckers to come and park on our site. There's nowhere them, for, for them to park. We don't have any kind of high-flow diesel that, that would attract them. So we, we really don't want large trucks coming on our site to sit. And in fact, if they did, we would be asking them to leave because they would really honestly plug up the site and make it harder to navigate around. You know, as far as adding light, we will comply with all your lighting standards. All of our lights are downlights. We don't have any kind of floods, which are probably written out of your lighting code. And we would meet that half-foot candle at the lot line, pretty typical requirement. And we do photometric plans by a professional lighting designer to make sure that our lighting plans are complying with your codes. Another thing I'd like to address is this, this is not truly virgin ground. This has been pre, pre-developed by another fuel station. That's one of the reasons that, you know, we knew, we knew it had previously been developed by fuel, so it kinda made sense. There's an existing site, had been previously fueled, and it made, made sense to take a look at it. And along those lines, not just with other fuel stations, but other, you know, quote-unquote, food service in the area, you know, adding a business like ours tends to, you know, increase a lot of competition. And that usually does good things. It, it creates reinvestment into existing buildings. It creates refreshes. So while our building is maintained well and things like that, it puts pressure on other businesses to, to go and improve. From an alcohol sales perspective, I'd just like to say that we're gonna follow all local zoning ordinances and, and requirements. So we will not sell alcohol here because we are, we're simply not allowed with our use. So I, I don't think that would change. The city would have to change that type of ordinance. So that's, that's really all I have there. From an employee and staffing perspective, we staff 715-plus stores. We're very good at it. We offer really competitive wages and benefits. And that's something that sets us apart and we're able to attract, you know, top employees. So we're very confident we're gonna be able to staff the site. And just in addition to that, our minimum number of employees, I believe, is, is it two or three? Two or three employees overnight? A minimum of three employees will be onsite at all times. So it's not like we're just gonna have one employee there. They're gonna have, you know, a manager and a couple of, of other shift workers there and, and there will be a presence. So with that, I'd like to invite our traffic engineer, Gene, up here to discuss a little bit about the traffic situation on Five Mile.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Gene Hartline with the Mannikin Smith Group, 2365 Hagerty Road, Canton Township. I'm probably the most unpopular person in this room tonight. I've done a lot of traffic studies throughout Michigan, Ohio, Indiana, California, a few other states. This traffic study was done to MDOT standards, which is also adopted by Wayne County, and followed all their methodology. And the MDOT Traffic Impact Guidelines standards are very stringent. And there's really very little wiggle room on them. So the study identified that there was negligible impact on the roadway system. And I'll explain that in a minute. Part of that is because pass-by traffic is really the primary traffic that goes to gas stations. I can tell you, I personally gas up either on my way to work or my way home from work. I don't leave at lunchtime to gas up. Or if I'm going somewhere else, a longer trip, I gas up along that trip. That's a pass-by trip. There's never a time I'd leave my house, go to the gas station, and then return to my house. That would be a new trip on the roadway network. And I think you'll find that you probably have the same travel patterns as that when you gas up. You're on that road anyways. You just happen to pull into the gas station to fill your tank. We identified that 127 cars would enter the site in the PM peak hour. These coming from basically four legs of the road, two on Newburgh and two on Five Mile, that are carrying 1,600 to 2,000 cars in the peak hour. That, that's approximately a 1% to 3% increase in traffic for all cars, including the pass-by as well as the new traffic. So if you consider just the new traffic, we're only adding about 1% to 1.5% increase in traffic on those roadways. So that would represent about, what would that be? About 12 cars in the peak hour, okay? And, and then that's divided on to the various roadway network. We have considered fast food. We have separate trip generation for the fast food, drive-through service there, as well as the walk-in convenience store for those people that might go in there just for a sandwich and not need gas. So that is accounted for in that. In all, we had negligible impact on the roadway system. We maintain the levels of service for the most part. We did find that the intersection of Newburgh Road and Five Mile Road could use some signal re-timing to reallocate the timing. I could tell you as a former municipal traffic signal engineer, you get so busy in your daily jobs, you don't have time to visit, revisit timing on intersections, especially when you have a lot of them. And sometimes those signals don't get re-timed for 20 or 30 years. So a little timing tweak would have some benefit to that. But that's all we found as far as impacts to the roadway network.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hartline. I appreciate your report. And we did receive your traffic study, which is in our packet, so thank you for that. It has a lot of detail in it. Good evening.
Yes, I just wanted to make one more brief comment about Sheetz as a corporation. There, there was a, a comment made about rats being a problem in the area. So I, I kinda wanna highlight one fundamental component of who Sheetz is. Sheetz is family-owned, family-operated. It's, the, the Sheetz family isn't in the Canary Islands somewhere while this group does all the work. The Sheetz family is very involved. Sheetz doesn't franchise any of its stores. Every single store is a corporate store. I mean, if you know anything about the franchising business, you know that oft, oftentimes, so there's franchise locations and then there's corporate locations. And almost every single time, the corporate location is run much better than the franchise location. Every Sheetz store is, is a corporate store. Cleanliness, employee attitude, and all of the things alike are, are held paramount. And so, you know, with, with concerns of cleanliness and things of that nature, Sheetz, I think, would be somebody who performs high on that mark. So I just wanted to make that clear about the, the organization.
Thank you, Mr. Richland, I appreciate that. All right, if there's no further comments from our petitioner, is there any other questions from any of our commissioners for the petitioner before we close the public hearing? Well, generally, we, we are gonna close. If you have one more comment you'd like to make, please go ahead. We don't wanna get, again, I don't wanna get into a back and forth debate between petitioners and residents.
The last comment I wanted to make is that there's been multiple comments about the proposed development being, servicing people who are passing by. I wanna stress again that I want a neighborhood that isn't catering to people passing by. I want a neighborhood that's catering to the lifestyle that we want. And if, one of my neighbors also asked me to just mention, can you move it down to 96 in Newburgh where there's already a ton of traffic down there? Like, does it have to be up in the neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. With that, if there's no other questions from any of our commissioners, I will go ahead and, sir, sir, we've, we need to close the public hearing. We've already gone through that.
Just please, just let me ask, I'll just make one comment. KC Orman, 37960 Howell Street. I just Googled on my phone, Sheetz and spills. And I'll let you do the same and you can see, you know, what you see. I think the business sounds like a great business. Accidents do happen. Keep that in mind in your location. There's a lot of other spaces available. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. With that, I will close the public hearing at this time. And a motion would be in order. Again, this is a rezoning request, not, we're not approving the entire parcel here or the site plan, we're just looking at zoning.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
I'm gonna offer a denying resolution. And the request to rezon, proposed parcel A is shown and described on Exhibit B on the survey prepared by Noah and Frost Engineers dated 10/17/23 from ROF Rural Urban Farm to C2 General Business. It's hereby denied for the following reasons. Number one, the proposed zoning contradicts the future land use map, which designates the site parks and community. Number two, the parks and community designation is consistent with the uses currently on the Felician-owned land and appropriate for the future development of this part of the property. Number three, the proposed development would require filing, filling portions of Zone A flood hazard area as determined by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And number four, the area is currently well-served with similar uses, including gas stations at the southwest and northwest corners of Five Mile and Newburgh Roads.
Is there support? Support? All right, we have a motion that is made by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mr. Bonjero to deny the request. Again, this would be a recommendation being made to city council. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, if the secretary is ready, please call a roll on the motion to deny.
Mr. Ventura.
Hi.
Mr. Bonjero.
Hi.
Mr. Law.
Hi.
Mrs. Daddell.
No.
Karen Magner votes no. Chairman will show.
Votes aye, motion passes. And that will be a, that will go on to city council with that recommendation. And we're all set with this item. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. And we will give you a moment to get out of the room, if you'd like, before we move on to our second item.
Do you have the other piece?
Thank you. Good night.
All right. I think we are ready to move on with item number two on our agenda, if the secretary is ready.
Yes. Petition 2023-12-02-15, submitted by ArchTech Architects LLC, on behalf of New Oakland Family Centers, requesting special waiver use approval to develop a planned development under Section 5.02 of the City of Livonia zoning ordinance as amended to convert two former office buildings for use as a domiciliary behavioral health facility with short-term temporary housing, less than 72 hours a day on the property at 9, I'm sorry, 29582 through 29596 Five Mile Road, located on the north side of Five Mile Road between Middle Belt and Hidden Lane in the southeast quarter of Section 14.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. This petition seeks special waiver use approval for a planned development. It involves renovating and converting two former office buildings into temporary living quarters for persons under the age of 18 experiencing behavioral health disorders. The property is on the north side of Five Mile. It's about 600 feet west of Middle Belt Road. The petitioner in this case is New Oakland Family Centers, which operates a facility at 295505 Mile, which is immediately adjacent to the property under consideration. New Oakland Family Centers has multiple locations throughout southeast Michigan, providing mental health services, including crisis prevention, counseling, and psychiatric evaluations. The overall site is described as three parcels. Parcel number one, the largest parcel with about 1.84 acres, contains New Oakland's main Livonia office, which is about 20,000 square feet in size. Parcel one was initially developed in 1969 as a Michigan Bell Telephone Distribution and Training Center, which was later converted into a credit union. Parcel number two lies immediately north of parcel one and is about 200 feet by 200 feet in area and is currently undeveloped. And then parcel three, which is a site under consideration this evening, measures 100 feet along Five Mile Road by a depth of 279 feet, with a total land area of 28,000 square feet, which is the equivalent of about six tenths of an acre. Parcel three was initially developed in the late 1950s as a multi-tenant office complex, which was known as Finkel Plaza. Access to parcel three is available directly from Five Mile Road and two cross-access points with parcel one to the east. Parcel one, again, is Zone C1, whereas parcels one and two are both Zone C2, and bordering parcel one to the northwest and south are single-family homes zoned RUF Rural Urban Farm. Now, I'll show you the site plan. The site plan shows the two office buildings being converted into domiciliary behavioral health facilities. The planned modifications are mainly to the interiors of the buildings. Each building would have a kitchen, bedrooms, with showers and bathrooms, a recreational area and common living area. And the buildings are positioned, as you can see, along the west half of the parcel, with parking on the east side of the property adjacent to parcel one. The building to the south appears on the plans as Building A. This would be the boys' dormitory, and would contain five bedrooms. And then the parcel to the north, which is Building B, is proposed to be the girls' dormitory. This building is slightly larger and would have seven bedrooms. Parcels one and three contain 96 and 43 parking spaces respectively. For parcel one, this equates to about one space for every 200 square feet of office space, which is considered adequate for general offices. And then parcel three, the parking on that site, 43 spaces, is equivalent to providing two spaces per bed with an additional 19 spaces for the staff. The only other improvements to the site shown, besides the minor landscaping, is the addition of a dumpster at the north end of the property, which would be surrounded by a masonry screen wall. With that, Mr. Chairman, I will read out, we do have a number of items of correspondence. I will read out the departmental correspondence. There's also several items from residents that I believe you have, you should have in your packets.
Yes, thank you.
So, I'll start with a letter from the Engineering Division that's dated December 5th, and it reads as follows. "The subject parcel has assigned the address range of 29582 through 29596 Five Mile Road, with the address of 295945 Mile Road being assigned to the overall parcel. The first legal description for parcel three in the submitted drawings appears to be correct. The second version is not correct and should be used in connection with the waiver use should the petition be approved. Number three, the existing parcel is currently serviced by public sanitary sewer and water main, as well as private storm sewer. The submitted drawings do not show any changes to the existing services to the building, so we do not believe there will be any negative impacts to the system with the proposed usages. And four, should any revisions to the onsite services be required, the owner will need to submit engineering drawings to this department to determine if permits will be required." And that letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next, we have a letter from our Livonia Fire and Rescue Division dated December 7th that reads, "We have no objections to the proposal with the following stipulations. With this project proposal being a short-term temporary housing of less than 72 hours, plan set submission with review and approval may involve inspectors from the state of Michigan. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set." And that letter is signed by Brian Cookla, Fire Marshal for the city. Next, we have a letter from the Department of Public Safety, Division of Police, dated January 5th, that reads as follows. "I have reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. I am concerned with this petition if passed. It will have a negative effect on the residents in the area. While mental health facilities do provide outlets for people to obtain mental health assistance, they come at a cost to the quality of life of those who live in their vicinity. These facilities have frequent disturbances, assaults, runaways, and calls for medical assistance. People suffering from a mental health crisis are often unpredictable and can pose a danger to the public. There will be an increase in emergency vehicle ingress and egress in the area at all hours of the day. Patients will flee from the facility as they do at all mental health facilities. One such incident resulted in the tragic death of a nurse who was struck by a vehicle attempting to return a runaway patient this past year in our city. Unlike most other facilities in the city, with the exception of numerous group homes, this proposed facility backs up to residential homes where patients will now be fleeing towards. This is not a desirable location for such a facility. Citizens in the immediate area will now be subject to an increase in this activity and high likelihood of police presence around their homes. These consequences must be considered when determining if this petition should be granted. Generally, mental health employees take a hands-off approach once a patient leaves their building, requiring police intervention. This needs to be addressed with New Oakland if this petition was to be granted, to determine if their policies would allow them to handle such situations on their own until they arise to a point where police intervention is required. If this petition is granted, I stress the need for 24/7 security and medical staffing present at all times in both buildings with proper security measures in place to curtail patient runaways and disturbances which undoubtedly will be a common occurrence. Furthermore, due to the ages of the patients this facility will be serving, staffing should be available at all times to assist in any transports to a hospital so that Livonia resources are not exhausted waiting for the patient's guardian to appear at the hospital. The City of Livonia has several mental health centers that are constant, that are a constant draw on the resources of the city. Assisting mental health facilities already places a large burden on the available public safety resources the city has, and this will undeniably increase if this petition is approved. Please feel free to contact me should you have any questions. And that letter is signed by Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter from the Inspection Department dated January 9th, indicating that the petitioner's proposal is a change of use, which would require that the proposed space must conform to all current barrier-free codes, building codes, and all mechanical codes and standards. This will be addressed further at the time of plan review if this project moves forward." And that letter is signed by Jerome Hanna, Director of Inspection. And last, we have a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Finance dated December 27th, and signed by Connie Calcula, Chief Accountant.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. And again, as Mr. Toramina noted, we did receive some communication from residents via email or all our online resources, and we do have those in our packet, and we appreciate those comments. They will become part of our record. So, is there any questions for our planning staff? I see no questions for our planning staff. Our petitioner is in the audience. Feel free to come forward to our podium. Ask that you start with your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Greg Sendy, 26545 American Drive, Southfield, Michigan.
Good evening.
Good evening. Is it possible that I could have the remote control?
You don't, I don't have one. They took...
Oh, that was theirs. Okay. So, I'm going to impose on Mark to move slides quickly.
He'll change slides for you.
Yes. And I came with many more slides than I think we have time for, so I'm going to skip through some in the interest of time. But everything that I have is in the books that have been distributed, and if anyone has any immediate questions or would like to address something that I've skipped over, we can certainly go back to that. I want to provide just a little bit of background, if you could move to the next slide, Mark, about our organization. It all starts with my father, who is the gentleman on the left, and also the gentleman on the right. This is my family. I am not in this photo, which means I probably took this photo. But he is our founder and our dad, and passed away in 2015, but was really an innovative and visionary child and adolescent psychiatrist who, in so many ways that I don't have time to discuss tonight, really devoted his life to the mental health and wellness of children across our state, and founded New Oakland at a time when he easily could have retired in 1990, but did not, and instead started our company. And shortly after that, brought us to Livonia, where we have been since the year 2000, first at our Schoolcraft site, and now at the Five Mile location, which is being discussed in this meeting. Next slide, please. I won't spend much time on this, except to say that we have more than, actually, that number should be 500, 500 staff across the state. Next slide, please. We are providing enormous amounts of care. If you add up just the number of families and individuals that we touch every year, not just in southeast Michigan, but across the state, and the number of points of care, 600,000 a point of care is an appointment, or a treatment day, or a psychiatric review, what have you. Next slide, please. This is a little bit, I'll dwell on this just for a moment, a little bit of our history in Livonia. We started on Schoolcraft in 2000. It was our second location here in Livonia after our initial founding. It is the anchor, Livonia in so many ways, of our presence across Wayne County. We now have two locations, Schoolcraft and Five Mile. Five Mile was added in 2019, making Livonia the only municipality with two New Oakland locations. We have committed to this community for almost a quarter of a century. We're very proud of that. Next slide, please. These are all our dots on the map. I won't spend any time on this, except to say we're all over southeast Michigan. And then, next slide, from east to west, these are our locations, including, highlighted in yellow, our new Kalamazoo location. So, we are serving not just southeast Michigan, but the state as a whole. Next slide, please. These are all photos of our locations. You can see what they look like. They are all, you know, a credit to the towns that they're in. They are well-maintained. They are really an important presence, highlighting in all of these communities, whether it is, you know, Wayne County or any other place that we do business, the importance of our commitment, especially to child and adolescent mental health. We are really devoted to that mission. We, as an organization, serve of those 40,000 individuals a year. Half of them are kids and teens. And as I'm sure everybody knows, and many of us have experience with, the mental health crisis facing kids and teens in all of our communities, rich and poor, every demographic group, every part of the country, every part of this state, is a real issue. And the proposal that we're, that we are advocating for here tonight is really about stepping up as a community and as an organization to fill an important gap in mental health care for kids. We stand for the idea of the right care at the right time. Right care, sort of self-explanatory, and it means everything from ordinary counseling that any one of us might need on any given day, to, up to but not including psychiatric hospitalization. And what this proposal is designed to do is provide a really underdeveloped, not just here in Livonia or in Wayne County, but underdeveloped, an important offering that the entire mental health system needs to do more of, which is to provide not long-term beds for weeks or months, but just up to 72 hours for kids, so that we can assess what the right next step for those kids is. And that's something that we do in Oakland County, and the proposed location in Livonia would be our first step to doing this in Wayne County. I'm not going to spend any time on this. We do all, we do all sorts of things related to mental health for kids. Next slide, please. And this graphic, which you can look at at your leisure, just really represents that continuum of care from very low intervention things, like seeing a counselor, to much more high intervention things, but not including overnight beds in a hospital setting. Next, please. I won't spend any time on this. I will say simply, next slide, please, that the activities that are envisioned for this location are sort of a companion to something that's called our partial hospital day program, or a face-to-face program. This is a very intensive sort of counseling program that involves many kinds of things, psychiatric care, one-on-one therapy, group therapy, family therapy. And we've been doing this in Livonia and in Wayne County, as I said, for 20, almost 25 years. It's the core of what we do. It is, it has brought individuals with sometimes very acute mental illness to Livonia, but our, but our solutions have never been in question as a part of an overall continuum of mental health services. And especially, the work that we do with kids has really been quite extraordinary and will stand on our 25-year history, 24-year history in Livonia, you know, for just the quality, not just of the care that we provide, but also the safety and security and attention to the issues of the community, both at our Schoolcraft location and later at our Five Mile location. I'll skip this slide. You can ask questions about it if you like. This next section is just our vision for the Crisis Center. I want to make a couple of points. One is that we are, we are embarking on this request at the encouragement of one of our major, major partners, which is Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan. They have encouraged us and have really put a lot of trust in us to find a location in the Detroit area, in Wayne County, that they can send kids to who are Blue Cross Blue Shield members and are in need of this kind of care. So, we would have done it eventually, but their encouragement and their insistence is an important part, and I think a vote of confidence in the idea overall. The second thing is that a large percentage of the individuals that we'll be treating are kids with eating disorders. I don't know if anyone is familiar with eating disorders. I certainly won't go into it. I'm not a clinician. But these are not aggressive, assaultive individuals. They are often, but not always, young women and girls who have issues related to eating disorders, and that will be a big part of the proposed population. The other part of the population will be individuals with mood and anxiety disorders. Again, not an aggressive, assaultive population at all. We pay very, very careful attention to that. But, I mean, these are going to be kids. And again, if you have kids, you know, the prevalence of depression and anxiety among youth in our communities, and those are the kinds of kids who will be getting this kind of care. Next slide, please. So, you know, what it will be is, I won't read what it won't be, because you can see that, but it is going to be a multi-use facility. It's going to be voluntary. No one is going to be committed to or sort of forced to participate. It's very short-term, less than 72 hours, our facility in Oakland County. The average duration of stay is... The average duration of stay is 27 hours, so we don't usually max out the 72. It will be closed to visitors and, you know, so there won't be a lot of traffic in and out. It will be staffed 24/7, round-the-clock with mental health professionals, including psychiatrists, psychiatric nurse practitioners, security staff, and, and mental health paraprofessionals and nurses. So, it will be, there will be round-the-clock staffing. And then finally, it will really be an opportunity to serve Livonia among all the communities in, in our region in, we think and hope and believe will be a really innovative way. Next slide, please. I'm not going to spend time on these. You can read them. There are three case studies of the kinds of kids who will be involved. One is, one is a case study of a young woman with eating disorders. Next one, please. One is a young man with depression. And the next one, please. One is a boy with anxiety and depression as well. We don't have time to go into all of them. Please do read and let us know if you, if you have any thoughts or questions about those case studies. I think a lot of this is already in your packet, so I'm going to actually just encourage you to skip over them. These are some of the plans for the facility itself. I think we saw it at the beginning before I even got up here landscaping. I will ask you to just dwell on the photos. This is our YFCC, what's known as the YFCC Program Facility in Oakland County. This is what it'll look like inside. So, there'll be a lobby and reception area. Next slide, please. A kitchen and an interview area, again, very contemporary and sort of, you know, well-designed and maintained. Next slide, please. There will be bedrooms for kids without disabilities, without physical disabilities and with physical disabilities. They're slightly different, but they look the same. Bathrooms, again, very much like a sort of hotel bathroom or a really nice dormitory bathroom. Same, there'll be facilities with individual disabilities as well. Next slide, please. And, you know, all, all I can say in response to, you know, some of the issues that were raised is that, next slide, please. Safety becomes our highest priority, so there'll be zero tolerance for drug and alcohol abuse. We have never had, either in our Oakland County facility or in other treatment areas, any kind of elopement or, you know, escape issues, mostly because, I mean, obviously teens are liable to do all sorts of things. But kids are, in general, especially with the kinds of diagnoses that these kids have, you know, and the kind of staffing that we'll provide, you know, very sort of receptive to the, you know, kind of restrictions and security that we, that we will maintain. So, we view it as part of our commitment to Livonia, to Wayne County, to southeast Michigan. It is part of our dad's vision. I am joined here by our architect and by my brother, who is our president and CEO. And the last thing, just in response to some of the discussion group questions from last week, is this pie chart. I'm sorry there's not a slide for it, but each of you has one of these. And it gives you, on the side that says Proposed Livonia Crisis Care Unit, Expected Utilization by Geography, the anticipation of where these kids are going to come from, based on where our current census of kids comes from. So, you can see Detroit, as the largest community in our region, has about 21%. Livonia itself has 8%. 8% of the kids we serve in Livonia come from Livonia. A large percentage, this big blue pie slice, is elsewhere in Wayne County. That's neither Detroit nor Livonia. And then you can see Oakland County, Washtenaw, and, and some other slices. And then, this is a little tougher to read, but this is on the other side where they come from in Oakland County. And the facility in Oakland County is at the 1200 Telegraph Road Government Complex in Pontiac. So, Pontiac is the largest slice at 12%, but you can see that the point of this pie chart is just, they come from all over. They come from Birmingham and Bloomfield and Farmington and Troy. And, you know, there is no sense of like a kind of geographic catchment area, really. The entire, Oakland County has hired us to do this because they want to serve the entire county. And, and we believe that Wayne County and outside of Wayne County for eating disorder cases will be well-served by this, this facility as well. So, I went very fast through all that stuff, but I, I hope that, I guess, I guess what I want to say is that, you know, this is, this is really about investing in our community in ways that will make a difference in the lives of kids. And, you know, our dad passed away before he could see a lot of the, of the flowering of his vision to do that kind of work. But we are, my brothers and I, and another brother who's not here, are making that happen. And we just would really welcome the opportunity to bring this, this kind of facility and this kind of capability to Livonia. So, I think that's where I'll leave it.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Sendy. It was excellent. And we do have your full presentation here to look through as well. I've, I know that we've been doing that as you, as you gave it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see if there's any questions for you from any of our commissioners. Is there any questions for our petitioner? Mr. Bonjero.
Good evening. First, understand, I think you guys, it's great what you're doing. It's really, really, really great. I know it's needed, for sure. 100% support it. I think for me, the biggest concern I have is the security. As the officer said, they have a lot of experience around the city and the things that they've experienced. He's recommending 24/7 security on-site. You had mentioned there's security on-site. What type of security is that?
Well, it would be round-the-clock, and I'll let my brother Kevin, our president, sort of get into the details of our security staffing.
Sure. So, first off, I do want to highlight the, the type of kids that we would be typically serving would not rise to the level of an inpatient psychiatric facility. Be less acute, it would not be aggressive assaultive, not the typical SUD cases, the substance use disorder cases. But to your point with regards to security, we anticipate approximately 20 staff per building. Now, that would be based on full-time equivalents and with the 24/7 model, every eight-hour shift would, you would need three per day, right? Three, three staff shifts per day. So, seven days a week, 21 shifts. So, we would anticipate at certain times of the day, two to three staff on shift at all times. With that would be, like my brother Greg said, behavioral health technicians, nurses, psychiatrists, security. Typically, in, in mental health world, security is viewed as a behavioral health technician. This would be male, female, someone that is skilled in behavior, in behavioral health crisis. It wouldn't necessarily be a security guard, although that could be considered. But I want to, I want to highlight the fact that this will not be a drop-off psychiatric facility in urgent care. Admissions will be screened during the day to make sure that the child is appropriate for an overnight stay of one to three days. So, that does do, do a lot to establish whether there is appropriateness for a child to participate in this level of care. But to your point, security would come with an abundance of staff.
Okay, that sounds good. But if I'm a 16-year-old boy, I'm in your facility, if I want to leave, I can leave.
Yes, so.
And there's really nothing you're going to say. You might call my parents, you might call the police. But in the meantime, I could be down the road or in the neighborhood, right? That's, I mean, is that how, is that in fact true? Is that how that would work?
So, I'll tell you our model, and I'll give you the example, given our existing facility, and how this would apply to our existing day program facilities across the state. First off, our existing facility is voluntary. Parents will admit, sign off on. This is not a involuntary type of hospitalization, so it is voluntary. Second, with that, there will be no technical seclusion and restraint. We will not be using four-point restraints. We will not be using injection medicines. We will not be using PRNs to medicate an individual. If they're, if they require that level of care, they would never come, we would never approve that admission. The facility, as it stands in our Pontiac Waterford location, would replicate this. There would be key cards swiping in and out that would preclude people from coming and going at will, hopefully dealing with elopement to some extent. There would be fire egress, the way it's established, you, you, once you hit the, the fire, the door depress, there'd be a delayed, doors would open at that point. So, elopement would be safeguarded in that way. However, just like in any of our facilities, if kids want to leave, they're going to try to leave. You know, not through windows or whatnot, but they're going to find ways to leave. They'll press the fire or whatever. At that point, we have to involve authorities. We're, you know, we'll do our best to, to, you know, prevent the elopement with our behavioral techs, but we would have to involve the authorities. What I will say, we've been open for a year in the Waterford-Pontiac location, and we've had zero elopements. We have not had to, we have not had to call the police to prevent an overnight stay from being elope, from being an elopement. So, that is a testament to the, the kids that we admit and their clinical needs and our skills as clinicians.
Just one last question. How many of your facilities back up to residential?
Well, so, all of our, frankly, most or all of our office-based facilities, all the pictures you saw on there are near-residentials.
But the 72-hour, do you have other ones with the 72-hour?
The Pontiac one is our first overnight. We, I will tell you that we, our first one was originally going to be in Claussen-Troy. And we got approved. We went in front of Claussen and got approval for it, and it boarded a residential. What happened was, Waterford became available and we audibled and moved up to where the county wanted us to be. So, we were approved under Claussen government to be right next to a residential, but we audibled and moved over.
So, that facility is not backing up to the Waterford?
The Waterford is not.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Narro.
I have a follow-up question to Mr. Bonjero's question. You said two to three staff. Is that per building? Because there's a girl's facility, a boy's facility, and that's this evening.
They can't be left alone. So, there'll be behavioral tech at both facilities. There'll be, yeah, nurse. I mean, there will be some duplicity, that a nurse could cover both buildings. But I think the techs and some of the core staff, a therapist, would not be shifted. Full-time nurse for one building is a little bit excessive. Full-time equivalent is probably half, so having them share responsibility. But for the most part, yes, dedicated staff. The ratios would be small. I think, I think I did want to highlight too, that our, our census at our Waterford facility, it's an eight-bed facility, and I don't think it's exceeded six. And typically, the census is around three to four.
Yeah, it's, it's, the average census is 4.1 in an eight-bed facility, and we would expect similar ratios.
And that's for, that's for management and staffing and ratios. But when you try to convert an admission, you want to have a bed available while someone's being discharged, so it makes it easier.
That it?
Yep.
All right. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Ventura.
Mr. Will Short. Just a clarification on a question that Mr. Bonjero asked. So, your, your patients are voluntarily admitted and can discharge themselves on their own volition at any time?
So, they're voluntary?
Yes or no?
Yes, by their parents. They're admitted by their parents. The parent would have to sign off on their discharge.
So, does a parent have to be present when they're discharged?
Typically, yeah. I mean, they have to, they would have to sign off. I mean, obviously, you could do some things electronically if they're stable and they're being discharged, but there'd have to be a sign off by a parent or guardian.
Okay. And if you have a patient that leaves the facility without being discharged, what happens then?
Parents are going to be called, and parents will be called and police would be called.
Okay, but your staff can't pursue them or constrain them in any way?
No, that's not true. I mean, we don't use seclusion and restraint as a way to de-escalate a situation with a child that's sort of out of control. But if someone elopes, we're going to do our best to detain them and, and make sure they don't, you know.
We can't, we can't physically restrain someone who's walking away, but we can, we can follow and verbally persuade while parents and police are engaged.
Yeah, and this would really be the case.
That's a clear answer. Thank you very much.
Yeah, this would really be the case in any of our centers, even if, if a child were to come for an initial evaluation. If they were not happy and they were walking out the building and the parent didn't know what to do, we would probably follow them, as we called the police, because they were a risk of harm to self. And they weren't in a 24-hour, they weren't in our partial program. They could be a new, new kid off the street to us. That would still be the approach we would use.
That's a good answer. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Will Short.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kerr Magno.
Couple of things. First of all, thank you, thank you much for the assistance, what I was asking you about last week.
Yep.
At your, your Waterford facility, is there any secondary containment? Or is it just the same building situation as your, there's no fence around the other, other location? There's no gates to go through to get out, truly get out?
No, there is the key card that I did mention. So, that would be something we would employ here. We would use a scan to, to, to change, to egress or... But there is the, the fire depress bar, just like most facilities have. And once that's pressed, there's a, there's a delay. And obviously, that five or 10-second delay or whatever it is, sounds the alarm.
I understand, I understand. I just, I didn't know if you had another perimeter ability to, to slow down someone that might be leaving the facility. So, no, once they're out there, if they jump that fence back behind the, behind the, what you're proposing here, they're in the neighborhood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr Magno. Any other questions? I have a couple that I will ask, just so I understand how your facility differs from some of the other facilities that I can think of in the area. Maybe you can help explain that for us. I'm thinking particularly of Hawthorne Center on Hagerty Road in Northville and even St. Mary's Hospital, which admits children for psychiatric care as well. How does your facility differ from those two facilities if you were to compare them?
Sure. So, so let's start with Hawthorne. You know, our dad was director of Fairline Center, which was the sister group to Hawthorne. So, we're very familiar with the Hawthorne level of care. That is kids that are acutely mentally ill and borderline long-term wards of the state. So, they are really the sickest of the sick. And those are long-term facilities where they'll have ongoing treatment for years typically. Aggressive assaultive oftentimes, very difficult to manage. Those are secure lockdown, that's a secure lockdown facility. There's nothing voluntary about that. So, it's really sort of night and day from this concept. The case studies that you saw there, those would be short-term cases where you're just trying to stabilize a kid that's, like, like Greg said, there's an eating disorder issue, a mood anxiety issue, something short-term that you're trying to transition them to sort of lower level of care, group therapy or outpatient or seeing a psychiatrist or whatever it is. But you don't know what that is yet because things are happening really quick. The second piece, the St. Mary's, again, that's an inpatient facility. St. Mary's is an inpatient adult facility. The emergency room there, we receive many kids from the, kids and adults from the emergency room at St. Mary's. They do not rise to the level of inpatient. So, if, if, if an adult needed inpatient, St. Mary's might admit the adult to their own unit, or they might transfer them. own unit, or they might transfer them to Havenwick, Harbor Oaks, another inpatient psych. If they don't need inpatient, meaning they're depressed, but there're no suicidal plan or intent, they could refer them to us as an outpatient facility. We would take over care, we would do a psychiatric evaluation, we'd stabilize and, and see a therapist once a week, once a month, whatever that might be. Same with kids, inpatient needed, they'd go to Havenwick or Harbor Oaks, less, they could come to us. So, many of the cases that go to St. Mary's or any emergency room hospital, whether in Livonia or outside of Livonia, make their way to us, because they don't rise to the level of inpatient, but they certainly don't rise to the level of Hawthorne. Hawthorne is the level above inpatient.
Okay, thank you for that explanation, that's helpful to understand the system and how it works, the different levels that are available. The other question is, your building currently on the five-mile road that's immediately next door to this, which is, I know you do some counseling and other, other functions there, how utilized is that building, and was there ever any consideration to using that building for residential overnight?
So, we acquired that building in 2019, because we really grew out of our Schoolcraft location, and we wanted to do some different clinical things. It's fully utilized, all twenty thousand square feet, ten thousand first floor, ten thousand second floor. That's one way we separate the kids from the adults that need services. Kids are upstairs, adults are downstairs, so there is a, a segmentation there, but we have group rooms on both floors, so there'll be a, a kids' group room, which would be like ten and under, a pre-teen, which would be like ten to twelve, thirteen, and then a teen group room, because we do stress the importance of keeping kids in their age-appropriate categories, and then on the first floor would be adults, and then we do, that, those would be group therapies, but also, like I said, our, our partial program, and then traditional outpatient services. So, that is fully occupied. We never really considered that for our residential concept, our domiciliary concept. We did think that the side buildings would one day potentially be something that we could consider for domiciliary, because it's sort of, there's just a, a real good complement there, and, and the domiciliary, anyone that comes to one of those two buildings for that twenty-four to seventy-two hours could actually benefit from services in the building by walking ten feet, right? So, that was, that was a consideration.
Okay, good, thank you, and that actually gives me one more question, which is, you mentioned that you, that you treat both adults and, uh, youth in your normal practice, and what we've been talking about for this particular, these particular buildings is youth housing, for potentially maybe one building for, for females, one for males, and you said at our study meeting that perhaps there's an opportunity, if you had an abundance of females, that maybe you would separate by age groups or something like that, using the buildings as, as that separation. Is there any potential, or any possibility, that adults could ever be domiciled at these buildings?
No. Our intent is, is all kids.
Okay.
The, the need for kids and the Blue Cross directive for this is, is, is all kids, especially with the eating disorder piece.
Okay.
And, and adults take a whole different type of approach.
Yes, they do.
We don't want to go, we don't want to get, it, we, it's just, let's just say, it's, it's not in our wheelhouse right now.
Okay, great, thank you. And, and I did at least want to mention that, as Mr. Bonjero said, that we, we definitely understand that there is a great need for this, you know, within the, the greater community. There's a, definitely a lot of issues with mental health these days, so we do appreciate the services you do provide. Is there any other questions from any of our other commissioners? I don't see anyone else have any questions. Let's go to our audience and see if there's anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this petition. Feel free to come to our podium. Good evening, Ms. McIntyre.
Good evening, Kathleen McIntyre, one four four five five Fairway. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I have some questions through you for the petitioner.
Yes.
That's okay. So, it was mentioned that the Waterford Pontiac facility has never required an emergency police call for elopement, is that correct?
That is what they indicated. If you'd like to just give us all your questions, we'll, we'll get him up after to, to answer, so we don't get back and forth.
Great, great. The other questions are, so, what have the, what have first responders been called for? You know, if not for elopement, have there been other calls? Have there been, you know, fire calls, false fire alarms, other, you know, other police calls? The, the other comment that I have is, the, the discussion about voluntary hospitalization, it's, they're minors. So, you know, I don't know if, if there's a distinction between, you know, it, the, parents have a right to seek treatment for their children, right? Without the children having to agree, so is it, is it legally voluntary, meaning parents have the right, or are all the, are all the minor patients there willingly? So, those are my questions.
I understand, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will Short.
Uh, next we'll go to the next resident who wishes to speak, and again, we'll, we'll get those questions answered for you afterward.
Heather Anderson, one five four seven zero, Hidden Lane. This is literally my backyard. My neighbor's here also, it's her backyard too. I wish I had come to the hearing for them to put the community center into the location for the counseling. Our neighborhood was great, we had occasional bums coming through, and since it's went in, we don't cut through McDonald's in that parking lot anymore, because it smells like weed so bad, I don't want my kid around, my youngest around it. We can't walk out front, because there's broken bottles on the sidewalk. I literally had to carry my dog one day, there was so many, so much broken glass. It's a dump. I mean, it's not that corner that it used to be anymore, and that's my backyard. I have an eleven-year-old in the house, and I know my neighbor's going to say she's got two little ones, we have animals, there's no wall, that, it, literally, they can walk into our yard. I, I have a little tiny picket fence. There's no way you can tell me that kids with depression and anxiety are non-combative. I have three children that don't have anxiety and depression, and they're all combative. I mean, they're good kids, but they're combative. I mean, it's in the nature of a kid, and with the new health laws in play, that kids can't, they can make their own decisions over their parents, I don't know what kind of play that has in a situation like this. I have no rights over what my kid did from the time he was fifteen until eighteen. I had no play, you can't talk to the doctors, they won't talk to you. I don't know how that correlates with something like this. I mean, if the parent's making the decision to get, put their kid in there, the kid's not going to be happy, they're going to be combative, because that's the nature of adolescence. This is scary to me, this is one of the scarier things, having this in my backyard. I think that's it.
Well, thank you, and, and your question does sort of dovetail to Ms. McIntyre's question about how does, how does the voluntary aspect of this work, so we'll try to get that clarified a little bit for you.
Is the new, um, is the new law protecting the kids' rights with healthcare, that, that?
We understand, we understand, thank you.
Oh, that's scary.
Good evening, sir.
Hello, my name is Hunter Anderson, I live on one five four seven zero, Hidden Lane. I am a member of the Livonia Youth Commission, and recently, we have done quite a bit of work promoting mental health, and we have been organizing with the Livonia Save Our Youth Coalition, a Livonia Youth Summit, in which we intend to focus on mental health problems. We recognize that mental health is a problem through children, through teenagers, and it's a problem that can last a lifetime if left untreated. We understand that, and we do applaud the New Oakland Family Centers' work on combating that. But putting twenty-four to seventy-two-hour residential areas right in somebody's backyard, it's not the way to go about it. As somebody who has thought and has been fighting mental health issues throughout my life, I understand that it requires a lot of understanding, and understanding doesn't come from being shoved by your parents into a place with people you don't know, people you may not trust, and you may not want to stay there, you might want to leave. If you want to leave, there's an alley that leads right to two backyards, that has quite a few young children who don't know who is coming out from those buildings. It could be in the dead of night, and there could be people running through, there can be a lot more police activity in the area, and as my mother said, there's a lot of animals which act, can act in many different ways, including violence against strangers that they don't know, running through their yards. So, I believe in both protecting neighborhood of Hidden Lane, nearby communities, and protecting children that could potentially go into this program, this cannot be something that goes through. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Anderson, for your comments, and also for your service to our community, I appreciate that.
Thank you for yours as well.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this?
Hello.
Hello, welcome back.
Hi. Katie McNulty, three oh nine seven six, Orange Lawn, again. I wrote in just today, I don't know if you were able to see it, I doubt it, but I believe because of the special waiver, this needs to pass a set of standards, and the first one is, the proposed use or uses shall not, should be in such of a location, size, and character, as to be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the zoning district in which it's situated, and shall not be detrimental to the orderly development adjacent zoning districts. Well, so obviously, this does not pass the mustard, full stop. I also asked before, I was just trying to learn about the zoning here, and I believe six point two three, is that correct? Is that what we go for these type of facilities?
I believe that's correct.
So, right off the bat, it should be on a twenty-five acre parcel of land, so this is clearly not even that. There's so many things on this with regards to fencing, size of the property, surveillance, location, location next to housing, I mean, this is like, as these folks said, it's in their backyard. So, it is, it is literally, like, when I wrote this, this afternoon, I was like, well, how much are you waiving? Because it seems like you're waiving everything, they're asking you to waive everything on this list of what you're supposed to be doing, and obviously, they're written for a reason. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McNulty. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Oh, good evening, sir.
Yeah, James Crowley, sixteen one oh six, Blue Skies. And anyway, I don't want to rehash what Katie brought up and some of the others, but again, I think, you know, it's great that they're doing great work, you know, I, I appreciate, and we do need this type of, you know, service, but again, it's not appropriate for the zoning or the site. I was married to a healthcare worker, and, for many years, and we had these discussions. She worked in a very similar type setting, and, you know, sometimes you just don't know when someone's going to get aggressive, so I heard all, you know, a lot of different stories over the years of, you know, things that happened, you know, that aggression, and I guess there's still some question, you know, we're talking about eating disorders and serving that population, but we're, there's also a mix, and I guess I'm not really sure, there's some confusion exactly what portion of the population is going to be other than, and, and to what level of, of illness or disorder that they have. So, we don't know, there's a lot of unknowns, and yet, we're standing here, ready to make a decision, to, to move forward, and yet, I think there's some uncertainty. Also, looking at the pie chart, and I, I do understand that other communities need to be served, but a very small portion was Livonia, and so, we're putting that right into our community, and I think we need to think about the, the, the site, and I don't think this is appropriate for the site, and there's too many unknowns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Anyone else wishing to speak? Oh, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Cassandra Nangle, I'm at one five four zero zero, Hidden Lane in Livonia, and this does back up immediately to my home, this site, and while I do appreciate the work that New Oakland Centers is doing, and the great need for behavioral health in our state and community, and probably country, I do fear for my children, backing up, playing in the backyard, possibly people watching them, they're nine and five, and there's just so many unknowns, that I'm fearful of this. We've had a lot of problems with the empty building behind us, my husband's had to call non-emergent police line to report people breaking windows out of the building, there's been vandalism at the end of the building, there's no fence or barrier behind the building, there's no wall, there is a wall backing up to a portion of the building, that's a long five-mile, but not right behind our home, so, and there's really not even, I think, five feet between our property line and the building, so, just would ask that you please don't consider this.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? If not, our petitioner can come forward. We do have some questions that we would like to get answered in regards to the emergency calls or calls to service that have been placed to your current facility in Oakland County, and what, what those involve, what types of purposes those are.
So, to be clear, our exist, our existing facility in Waterford, the twenty-four to seventy-two-hour residential, there have been no elopements. I will say that all of our centers, including the, the services that are provided next to the twenty-four to seventy-two-hour facility in Waterford, there are, there are incidents there. Our Livonia Center in Schoolcraft, our Livonia Five Mile, there are times we've had to call the police, because someone will present for treatment, and they are inappropriate for service with us, and we have to call the police. But once they have been screened, and we have deemed them appropriate for an overnight stay at our Waterford facility, we have not had any elopements, so I want to be clear with that. But across our sites, on occasion, just like at any service, whether you present to the emergency room or any outpatient center, there are times when people present and they don't fit our service level, and we have to find services for them, that could potentially involve the police or an ambulance, so, but with regards to our twenty-four-seven, that's never happened. To the point about voluntary and involuntary, it's a great question, it's a very, it's a, it's a tough topic with, with kids, and voluntary versus involuntary, but for, for our project here, and our Waterford project, everyone is voluntary, which means if, if you don't want to participate, we're, we're going to have to have a meetings of the minds. Just because a parent wants you to participate, if a child is oppositional, defiant, not interested, not, that ultimately makes them not appropriate, and then, it would not make sense for us to admit this child to this level of care. So, we're going to use our best screening process to make sure kid is on board, parent is on board, voluntary, everyone signs off. Otherwise, you go down a path where it's involuntary, and it doesn't make sense, and we're not the right place for that child, or that family. Just because the parents want the service for their child, if the child is not on board, it doesn't make sense for us to spin our wheels and have the police there in twenty-four hours, because the kid, the child is trying to elope. So, I want to be clear with that. Now, could potentially something happen, turn from voluntary to involuntary in the child's mind, where they think, well, I'm voluntary, I don't want to stay here now, I want to go? Yeah, but we have not experienced that at our Waterford site, and I, I think that's a testament to our screening process. So, that was, that was the, the compliance issue, I think that touched upon that. If I missed something there, let me know. I think there were questions about how we will maintain the space, I think we've spoke about this, we will get into compliance with any escalation of the wall to make that in compliance, we're going to definitely completely renovate the space with new roof and making it look a lot nicer, resources will be put into that. If there are issues with our existing space, with weed, or with glass bottles or any of that, I, I'll definitely look into that, I did not know that, you know, coming into this, but that's of super importance. I think we all know the weed is an issue across the whole state, but we can definitely put resources into addressing that, we don't want this to, to hinder the community, our goal is to really improve resources in the community. Again, with combative kids, I get it, I've got a kid that's combative too sometimes, but we really don't want to admit kids for this service if they are not appropriate. So, I think the hypotheticals we, we showed are the type of cases we're, we're dealing with. Eating disorders is one that Blue Cross has really chaired us to, to address, those are typically not aggressive assaultive. Those are typically not aggressive assaultive individuals, they do need intervention. Mood anxiety can lead to some disruption, but for the most part, we're dealing with cases in this space that don't rise to that level of aggressive assaultive. To the point of the Livonia Youth Summit, I applaud the, the individual for that. We would like to work hand in hand with the, the Youth Summit to address this. I do recognize that being and bordering upon other houses is an issue. What I will say though, and I think we spoke about this, is sometimes the state licenses adult foster care homes and children's therapeutic group homes in residential facilities. I'm not sure if Livonia has adult foster care or children's therapeutic group homes across the community, but those are homes in the community. We're trying to segment that off from the residents with a wall, and attached to, really attached adjacent to our behavioral health facility. So we are trying to keep that away from the residents as much as possible, although we couldn't put it inside that, the building, to, to your point. Again, I, I would stress that we deal a lot more with disruptive kids in our traditional outpatient centers when presenting for treatment on a daily basis than we've ever experienced in our Waterford facility for the last year. I mean, we, we, we see, like, to Greg's point, we, you know, 40,000, 600,000 touchpoints, dozens of intakes a day at each site, and the disruption that a new patient causes is far more than an established patient, which is what these kids would be. Again, fencing, we'll, we'll address that, and I, I know that there was a point on the zoning. I know we don't fall exclusively under an exact zoning issue, I think Rich was going to speak to that, but I think there's a sliver on, a couple zonings, and that's why we're here, to see if we can qualify for one of those two, because it's a little bit unclear as to how we would fall. So, I don't know if Rich had anything to say, or if you guys wanted to speak to that, we could address it.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
I, I don't really, Rich Cavanda, Architect Architects. I was wondering if I could maybe impose on Mark, maybe to help us address the, the issue with our use and how we fall, not specifically into an approved use.
Mark, I believe, I believe this is a special waiver use, is that correct?
That is correct.
You're seeking a special waiver, yeah.
Yeah, so, so there's, there's a carve-out within the zoning that allows, with a special waiver for this type of facility, is that...
That's correct, yeah. Section 6.23 does not apply in this case.
Okay.
This falls under provision of a planned development, which is a special section in the ordinance that considers uses that might not otherwise fall neatly within any particular zoning district. And it provides the standards for which the Planning Commission and the City Council ultimately determine if that planned development, as it's referred to, is appropriate for a given site or location.
Okay, so it's a little bit different than, than we discussed with the resident earlier.
Correct.
Good, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Is there any other questions from any of our commissioners for our petitioner, will they back up at our podium?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Care Magno.
Just another question about the 72-hour care. I know you said they don't stay 72 hours typically, and you don't fill the facility. What's a thought process besides, behind 72 hours?
Well, 72 hours was a state sort of understanding back in the day. It's sort of morphed as to it not being super important, but I think the, the real clinical philosophy with that is, the longer a child is spending time with you, or an adult, overnight, they become detached from their family. And you, and, you know, we spoke about Hawthorne, we spoke about inpatient, the longer the length of stay in treatment, the less clinical benefit is to the child. You want to keep the child attached to their family as much as possible. Can they have a day program, an intensive out program, outpatient program? Yes. But we don't want a child to be with us three, four, or five weeks. That's not clinically helpful to the child, as long as you can find that next level of care, to find them to sort of exercise those, those muscles that they're going to develop skills and resources with.
Is it possible the child can stay with you for two days, go home for a day, come back for three days, go home for a couple days? Is that possible?
That's, that's not what we're looking at. We're looking at stabilizing whatever's going on, one to three days, and then finding the appropriateness. If, if, technically, they could come back, but, but if they're, if they, if we establish them in a, in a secondary level of care, we think that if that fails, then we have to look at another resources. We, we don't want this to be a revolving door.
Does the insurance, will the insurance continue to pick up intermittent stay?
Everything we do is based on medical necessity, so unfortunately, we're at the mercy of the insurance company. Whatever they tell us to do, we're going to do. We will advocate when we feel more or less is needed, but from our relationship with Blue Cross, this is 24 to 72 hours, and that is what their understanding is to cover from their benefit package.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Care Magno. Any other questions before we close the public hearing? No other questions? I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, and a motion would be in order. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation.
Thank you, appreciate you guys.
I'm, I'm going to go ahead and motion to offer a denying resolution.
Okay, Ms. Dinaro.
This request to develop a plan, general development at 29582 to 29596, Five Mile Road, is denied for the following reasons. One, the petitioner has failed to comply with all special and general standards and requirements as outlined in Section 5.02 and 13.13 of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended. Two, the petitioner failed to demonstrate that the planned development option is needed to utilize the subject property. Three, the site was developed and intended for office purposes, not short-term residential. Use of the buildings for general or medical offices or other uses permitted in the C1 District is appropriate, given its location, layout, size, intensity of use, hours of operation, and proximity to single-family residential. Four, the Livonia Police Department opposes the proposed use of this location as contained in its January 5, 2024 report. Concerns include the facility's location adjacent to residential homes, and the potential for incidents involving disturbances, assaults, and runaways resulting in police intervention and calls for medical assistance. Five, the Planning Commission believes that options are available throughout the city for appropriately locating a domiciliary behavioral health facility that would not present the same potential threats to the resident's peace, welfare, and safety as this location poses. And six, the proposed use is incompatible and not in harmony with the surrounding uses in the area.
Is there support?
No support.
All right, we have a motion made by Ms. Dinaro, supported by Mr. Ventura. This is a recommendation or request to deny. Is there any discussion on that motion? If there's no discussion, Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dinaro.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
I would like to just make a really quick comment. I think that this is a necessary thing, but I think that items four and five in the resolution have to rule the day, so I'll, I will vote aye on the denying resolution.
Thank you.
Who says aye? Okay. Care Magno says aye. Chair will show.
Vote aye, motion passes, and we're all set with this item. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight, and thank you, residents, for coming as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Torino.
Right of appeal.
Excuse me?
Right of appeal.
Oh, yes, you do have seven days in which to appeal this decision to City Council.
Ten days, yeah.
Ten days? Well, ten days, we'll give you 10 days, why not? Three more. And we do have one item left on our agenda, this is an approval of minutes, Mr. Secretary.
And that is the approval of the minutes of the 1,207th Public Hearing Regular Meeting, held by the Planning Commission on December 19, 2023.
All members were present, with the exception of Ms. Dinaro and Mr. Care Magno. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
By Mr. Bonjero, supported by Mr. Long. If there's no objection, we'll safely show, I guess that would be four to approve, with Dinaro and Care Magno abstaining.
Correct.
So, we'll mark four on that. Mr. Secretary, thank you, and that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the commission? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Mr. Ventura, supported by Mr. Bonjero. Again, if there's no objections, I think we can safely show six to adjourn the meeting tonight.
Yep.
All right, no objections, we will adjourn the meeting tonight at 9:41 PM. We do want to thank Livonia Television for bringing this meeting to the community, and wish a good night to Livonia.